Good evening, we're going to, uh, we're going to reconvene in open session. And we have an announcement from closed session, and we have an announcement from City Attorney Quinn Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor. The Minnesota Brown Act covering both sections 549 or 529.
Five six point nine, D E one, and five four nine, five seven. City Council in the closed session discussed the two items identified on the agenda. The City Council gave direction. There was no other reportable action taken.
Great, thank you. So, um, welcome to the City Council regular meeting for March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And we're going to have a pledge led by this wonderful young man over here, Andrew Atkinson. So Andrew, if you could come down, please. You know what you're doing with the microphone? There's your, there's your flag.
Is it on?
I think, well, go ahead and try it. Just say hi.
Hi?
Yeah. I think it works.
It's up. I pledge all allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Terrific. Oh, Andrew, no, I want to ask you a couple of questions. All right, so, so what school do you go to?
Penny Camp.
And what grade are you in?
Second grade.
And do you like it?
Yes.
What's your favorite part about school?
Math.
Math? Wow, that's, that's incredible. And just while we were, um, talking over there, I learned that you're just about to go on a great adventure. Where are you going to be going to?
Australia.
Australia? That's amazing. That's a long way away. Well, we have some things for you here. We'd like to, um, Mom and Dad, do you want to come up? You wanted to stay there? So I'll have our, your picture taken. And then Mayor Pro Tim Hoerth
Yes.
Has a special city pin for you.
I do. Does he have any teachers or principals here?
No, no. Just parents. We actually met when I was walking, handing out information about Measure MB. And you were gracious enough to, uh, you and Andrew were in the garage and you were doing tinkering on something and we had a nice conversation. Yeah. So we had a great, we had a great conversation. So there is a city pin.
City pin, just like we wear, see?
And then we also want to give you this certificate of recognition from my colleagues here on City Council and recognizing you, Andrew Atkinson, for leading the, the City Council and the community in the Pledge of Allegiance. So we thank you so much. We wish you a safe trip. And bring me back some wallabies or something, right? Thank you so much. Oh, no, we're, we're going to get a picture here.
You can actually move to the middle and make your joint. That should, yeah, let's do it like this. Yeah, move that shit out. Thank you. There we go. All right, everyone up here.
Wallaby.
Perfect. Got it. Thank you.
Have a great trip. Yeah. Is it the first time for Raymond Backs? Is there another one?
I think there is something else.
Yep, we got one more. And then we're going to move to the ceremonial calendar.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Lesser.
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hoerth.
Here.
Mayor Franklin.
Here. And we're going to move to the ceremonial calendar. And we are going to welcome Evelyn Schmidt back to council. We want to thank her for donating a very special photograph that she took during the storm, during the recent storms. Okay, we found out that Evelyn has been to Australia. And for those of you that go down to the beach quite often, you'll see Evelyn down there with her camera and her friends and everything. And she's quite the photographer. And how long have you been doing it? Not, not that long.
About fifteen years since I retired from teaching. Yeah, this is my fun thing to do.
Oh, wonderful. So did we get, yeah, so that's the photo that you, uh, that you gave to City Council. And we have it in our City Council office right upstairs.
I have to see it.
You'll have to see it, right? And then I think we got one more. We got a little surprise for you. So do you want to describe that?
That's, um, recently I was up in, uh, Canada for the Northern Lights. And, uh, this is what I came back with. It was a really fun trip. It was a very difficult trip for an eighty-five-year-old lady carrying two cameras in the pitch black over the snow and trying to take pictures. But I did it and I loved it.
Oh, that's great. It's a stunning photo. Yeah, and you've just reminded me that I have yet another bucket list item, you know, place to go to.
It's something you really should see, and you have to see it through a camera because i- if I looked at that with my naked eye, it would be gray. And it's through the camera that you actually see the colors. So get your iPhone out and start taking pictures.
Great. So we, what we want to do is we want to recognize your generosity with us and give you a city pin.
Oh, my pleasure.
And then a certificate of recognition. So my colleagues and I, uh, do hereby appreciate photographer Evelyn Schmidt in recognition for her peer photo gifted to the City Council on February sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Oh, I really appreciate it.
Great. Well, we, and we do too. Thank you so much. So we'll get a picture here. Here, we'll put you.
And we'll prove you were here with us.
Okay.
A picture with the back. What's next? Okay, wait, wait, we got it. Okay. There we go. Awesome. Everyone up here.
You got it? One more. Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim asked, uh, Hoerth asked, uh, what's next? Where, where to next?
Okay, next, well, I'm going this October, I'm going to go to Ethiopia to take pictures of a tribe in Ethiopia. And I'm really looking forward to that because I. My favorite thing is to take pictures of people.
Oh, that's wonderful. That was Ethiopia.
I need a sherpa.
There you go. Well, anytime. Thank you so much. Safe travels.
We have more wall space.
Thank you, Evelyn. I saw that photo and I just wanted to bring it in. And it's the, the veterans, Martha, the veterans. Okay, and at this time, we'd also like to recognize any, uh, US military veterans that might be with us here in the audience. If you could just go ahead and stand so we can go ahead and acknowledge you and thank you. Thank you very much for your service. And, uh, okay. So moving on, we're looking for, um, the approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of the ordinances. We have a motion to accept by Councilmember Montgomery, seconded by Councilmember Napolitano.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And now we come to the City Council and Community Organization announcements of upcoming events. You have one minute.
Uh, hello. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. On Wednesday, April third, from three to three thirty PM, children ages five to twelve are invited to join us at the library for an art activity demonstrating the effect of a solar eclipse. On April eighth, two thousand twenty-four, a total solar eclipse will cross parts of Mexico, the United States, and Canada. A total solar eclipse happens when the moon passes between the sun and the earth at such an angle that the moon completely covers the sun and blocks out its light. Join us at the library for an art activity, uh, demonstrating the effect of a solar eclipse. And participants will take home with them their very own solar eclipse glasses. While supplies last. Again, this program is designed for children ages five to twelve and will take place on Wednesday, April third. Registration is available currently on our website, lacountylibrary.org, and I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Josh. Anybody else, if you're, um, uh, if you're going to come on down, you can come down and wait in line and, uh, you know, be seated right down here. So we can just go one right after the other one.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name's Ava Moore, and I'm here on behalf of Miracosta High School. I'm thrilled to announce that our upcoming spring dance happening this weekend called Vegas Night and Silent DJ is going to be a blast with a casino theme where everyone gets to dress up in cool costumes. We've got lots of fun planned, including casino games spread out across the gym, uh, including fun prizes you can win. We're also switching things up with having a silent disco instead of just having music blasting from speakers. Everyone can wear headphones provided by our awesome DJ that will play music. You can switch between songs, and it's quite funny seeing everybody dancing in silence when you take them off. We've already sold around three hundred tickets, and we're hoping for even more last-minute guests. We are super excited for this upcoming event and hope it boosts our school spirit.
Hi, um, I'm Riley Campion, also here on behalf of Miracosta High School. We are also currently doing Scholar Quiz at Miracosta. In Scholar Quiz, teams of four go against one another, one by one, in a competition of knowledge. Each member of each team has a flag, and when they think they know the answer to a question, they can raise their flag. Whoever raises their flag first gets to answer first and the opportunity to win points for their team. There are sixty-four-person teams, so that's two hundred fifty-plus competitors in Costa Scholar Quiz. Um, this is in a bracket-style, single-elimination tournament. And the questions cover diverse academic disciplines as well as pop culture trivia and current events. Any students or faculty are allowed to watch the Scholar Quiz competitions, and they usually take place at lunch in classrooms around campus. The span of the tournament is from yesterday, March eighteenth, to Friday, March twenty-second, with finals held on the morning of Tuesday, March twenty-sixth.
Thank you. I volunteered to be a reader. It was a lot of fun. And also intimidating. Those questions were difficult.
Hi, my name's Mia Langstein. Um, we also had a basketball tournament last week. It was really fun. It was three-on-three competition, and anyone who wanted to play could play. So we got a lot of participation, which was fun to watch. Um, comedy sports versus ASB also, um, did a match a couple Fridays ago. I played in the match on ASB's team. We didn't win, but it was close. Juniors are also doing state testing. Last week was English, and this week is history. The, there was also, um, a lot of band events going on, including the evening of eclectic ensembles. There's also a choir concert going on tonight. Midterms are this week as third quarter ends. And K T L, K T L A News actually did a feature on our school recently, and they featured Cheer, Badminton, Drama, The Jazz Band, and Link Crew. And then there's also some other fun sports stuff going on. Our boys volleyball team is playing Modern Day today, and on Friday, there's the big Loyola game. So if anyone wants to go support, it'd be super fun. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Latrice McGlathen, and I'm with Connective Federal Credit Union. I'm here tonight representing the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce as the current board chair. I'm here tonight to invite you and the community to our annual State of the City address this Thursday, March twenty-first, at five PM at the Shade Hotel. We are excited to partner with the city to provide these updates to the community, and we'll hold a chamber mixer directly following the event. Since space is limited, we, uh, so we recommend registering on the chamber's website, manhattanbeachchamber.com. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody we know going? Oh, this, this Thursday? This Thursday? Anybody else? Community announcements? Uh, colleagues?
You've got one.
Yeah, you've got.
So, so I have one. Uh, we want to recognize our Chief Johnson, who was awarded the Law Enforcement Achievers Award from the Southern California Chapter of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives. So Chief, please stand. Okay, so we move on. Anybody?
You're good.
Okay, so we move on to public comments, and I need to make an announcement. It has come to our attention that people have been disrupting City Council meetings in other cities with anti-Semitic or racially-based comments through Zoom. Such comments are disruptive and interfere with the people's business and are not within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the City Council. I'm instructing the City Clerk's Office to mute any speakers who attempt to disrupt the meeting with anti-Semitic or derogatory comments based upon race, gender, or other protected categories. So if members of the public can come down and make a public announcement, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Franklin and City Council members. I'm Alan Kirschenbaum, a resident of Manhattan Beach. Tonight, you have three items regarding art on your agenda, with the combined items having been allotted two hours. My concern is what a vote by you constitutes tonight. Are you deciding whether the staff and Arts Commission followed your directions and intentions? Or are you personally deciding what is good versus bad art? If you're deciding whether the staff and Arts Commission followed your directions and intentions, your decision-making should be pretty simple and not consume a lot of time. You got the minutes from prior meetings, and there's always video if the minutes are unclear. If you're deciding what's good art for the city, I have to question why. I can't imagine any voter in the city voted for you based on your reputations for artistic criticism. Staff and the Arts Commission are part of the community and so have a pretty good idea of the community's overall taste. I doubt you want to substitute your personal tastes for the community's taste. So why try to decide on good art for the city? If you do decide to vote on good art to avoid complaints, please rest assured that no matter what is decided, there will be complaints. It's the nature of art to be thought-provoking and communicative. You could vote on a still life of mom, apple pie, and the American flag, and people will still complain it's too plain vanilla. So tonight, please look at these items in terms of whether or not the Arts Commission and staff followed your directions and intentions. Let's save your time for other matters affecting our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschenbaum.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Allen. My wife and I live with our family in the thirteen, at thirteen thirty, uh, Voorhees Avenue, which is just north of Miracosta, uh, school campus. First, I've heard that flattery gets you everywhere, so I want to thank the council members for their service to the community and to taking up very important topics, including undergrounding utility assessment districts. And I'm going to save us hopefully thirty seconds or a minute on this, so I'll give you a gift as well. I want to thank, um, also, um, our senior engineer, Jeff Yawka, who's been amazing to us during the process, learning more, educating us, and helping my neighbors and I to make decisions, as well as the city manager, Bruce Mo. On behalf of my neighbors, I'm here to request and encourage your support to form a UUAD encompassing the sixteen parcels owned by the twelve homeowners along the south side of the thirteen-hundred block of Voorhees Avenue. By my tally, ninety-four percent of the parcel owners, or fifteen out of sixteen of the parcels submitted, were in support for forming a UUAD. I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure that sets an official record for the city in terms of the survey. And I believe that that support will continue forward with the UUAD petition as well as the ballot vote. We'll establish records for each of those as well. In part, our neighbors' overwhelming support reflects the fact that undergrounding utility lines isn't just a matter of aesthetics in our area of Manhattan Beach. Rather, somewhat unique to our thirteen-hundred block of Voorhees Avenue, ten out of twelve of the homeowners have lived with the utility lines actually parsing the properties because there were adjacent lots that were merged or still separated but owned by one homeowner. In other words, the utilities aren't just parsing the, the, the property, just dead property, but in some cases, the actual homes, the physical structures that the neighbors live in. And not only has that obstruction inhibited property development, it does pose an elevated danger to the residents on the street. In fact, you'll remember the deluge of atmospheric rivers that we got around this time last year. The power lines and some of the utility lines were actually downed in two of our neighbors' homes or in the backyards of their homes. So given these factors, among many others, we're seeking and encouraging the council members to approve our, the support for our survey and to move us forward to the UUAD petition and the ballot vote. And we hope that the city will actually prioritize and expedite our project advancing the approval and the construction processes as soon as possible. I didn't save you any time, but I appreciate yours. Thanks so much.
Thank you. You owe us.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Franklin and distinguished council members. Wayne Powell, Board Trustee for the LA County West Vector Control District. I'm here to give a really quick report, an annual report. As you know, vector control is responsible for, um, prevention and control of disease-bearing insects, namely bees. Well, actually, I won't talk about bees separately, but mosquitoes and ticks. Mosquitoes, especially localized mosquitoes, carry West Nile virus and the Zika virus. And ticks carry Lyme disease. So the problem with mosquitoes is standing water. That's an ideal breeding ground, and as you know, we've had lots of rain. And it's going to be more significant as we approach the summer months. So for residents, it's requested to basically get rid of any standing water that you have on your property because that's usually the breeding ground and causes most of the problems. Now, I mentioned aggressive Africanized bees, and they're just, they're actually more than just a nuisance. People can die, people who have allergic, severe allergic reactions can actually die from that. So that is another significant risk. And of course, the district is responsible for obeying bees responsibly. Now, one thing I want to recommend is if you have bees on the outside of your property, please don't call the fire department or the police department or even, you know, Public Works because all they will do is contact Vector Control. So if you have bee swarms, please call Vector Control at three-ten, and the phone number is nine-one-five-seven-three-seven-zero. And if you want more information about this subject, you can go to the website, which is lawestvector.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Anybody else? If you could please just come on down if you plan on speaking. I'll save a little bit of time. No, it's my fault. I didn't announce it.
Uh, my name is Teresa Everson or Terry Everson. I live on Homer Street, next to Robinson. I actually hadn't planned on speaking, but since the undergrounding did come up. Uh, when the survey came out, I talked to neighbors in that little section where we're so close to Hermosa. Uh, that'd be south of First Street. On our street, on Homer, most were no's. I talked to most of the people in the little block on Francisco, and they were no's. Longfellow, I think there's three or four houses, one no, and a couple people didn't answer. So my informal survey had about ten no's, one yes, and there were three rentals I wasn't sure of, and four unknowns. And basically, what we're hoping, since most of us do not want to underground, since we're the little area right adjacent to Hermosa, if the people north of First Street, first and north, want to do the undergrounding, maybe just leave us out because we're right there by Robinson and close to Hermosa, and most of us don't want it. So just FYI.
Great. Thank you, Terry. Anybody else in chambers? Nope, we got one more.
I'm trying to follow that because my name's Pete Skeken. I live in, on Ardmore, near, uh, Ardmore and Pacific. And, uh, this is again regarding the undergrounding. And I'm a hard no. And it's because, uh, I don't know what this gentleman's situation is, but mine is that the power lines have never been a problem in this area. Uh, there's never been, I am going to be sixty-seven years old next month, and I've lived about sixty of those years in Manhattan Beach. And I've never had a problem with the power lines. The power lines do not block my view. I don't even know they're there until this comes around. And the other thing is that I know this city's changing, but there's still some of us in here who are not rich. And just being told that you're going to have to fork over a hundred thousand dollars because somebody wants a view. You know, that's just incredible to me. Now, I haven't taken any polls. I just talk to people in the neighborhood. And most of the people who are like me have been there for a while don't see a need in this. And it's just, as I said, um, I don't know where the city falls on this. I know you're supposed to be neutral, but it seems to me that the city is falling on the side of the people who want underground. Now, as I said, the city's changed. When I was younger, living here, I was working class, pretty much. People who worked in the fence industry and around that. And then around the late nineteen eighties, people, more wealthy people started to move in. Everything changes. Bungalows left, mansions went up. And the thing is that this undergrounding thing came up probably, I remember in the early nineties when my father was still alive. And I talked to him about it. At that time, it was estimated to be about six thousand dollars per lot, something like that. We said, probably better to happen now because when everybody can afford it. But it kept getting pushed back and pushed back, and then every few years, it comes back like one of those movie monsters that you kill, and it just keeps reconstituting itself and coming back, and the price is higher and higher and higher. Some of us, you know what? I can liquidate, uh, my savings account. I could liquidate a, um, retirement account, but it's just not that, not that easy for something I don't see as absolutely necessary. Really quickly, I can, especially at this time with inflation, we have a story in the paper about the power bills are going up. Edison has got a twenty percent increase approved. This is not the time. I guess my time is up.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
I'm against it with extreme prejudice.
Great, thank you. You'll have an opportunity to vote.
I didn't plan to talk, but now hearing what we, what is being said, I want to talk. I live, my name's Lida Sandera. I live at four-six-five-twenty-sixth Street. That's just around the Vista Drive, and all my neighbors wants to take it down. I have people coming from Europe visit, and when we, I drive them Vista Drive. They are saying, is this America? They can't believe it. All those lines and all those, it's just really like not, not today. And next to that, in our blogs, the electricity is constantly off. I don't know why, but I am always afraid of earthquake, what it would do with all those poles. If they will fall, they will go directly on the houses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lida. Anybody else?
Have you already talked about the?
Public comments is, we're in public comments. Okay. Nobody left in chambers? How about online?
Lucia La Rosa Ames.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, so my name is Lucia La Rosa Ames, and I am a resident of Manhattan Beach. And, um, I am, I am, um, my comment is about the consideration for a moral to be designed. And I am, my comment is about the consideration for a mural to be designed by the task force in cooperation with L.A. County, L.A. Versus Hate group. And I think that, you know, this initiative has good intention, and given that we have had issues of antisemitism and anti-black racism in Manhattan Beach. But I have two, two comments. One is that I, particularly for antisemitism, I am concerned in that we are putting antisemitism and diluting antisemitism in the context of hate, while we needed to recognize that antisemitism is more than a matter of hate or personal prejudice, prejudice, is anti-Jewish racism. And it can operate in multiple ways, and it's not just hate or hostility, but also bias. It can even be unintentional, and can be expressed in stereotypes, in coded language, in conspiracy theories. So I recognize that murals are an important form of public art, but public art doesn't have to be only murals, and doesn't have to be necessarily visual. It can be, it can be in other forms, like performances, dances, that engage more the community, the entire community, not just the few students that will participate in this mural. And, and I hope that the city consider a extended campaign to fight antisemitism in our, in our town and in our school district, and, and use those funds for other forms of art that can actually educate about antisemitism. And, and especially the current form, the modern form of antisemitism, which is comming all with the demonization of the city of Israel. And, and all this, and for example, it could be a book club, or it can be a performance, or a concert, or like other activities that engage the entire community and that educate the community of, about the Jewish culture and the Jewish history. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lucia.
There's Peter Sonberg.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My, I have a concern and a question. When I moved here in 1997, my block was assessed for an underground utility construction and completion. I'm wondering if people who have either already rebuilt their houses in an, in an underground utility assessment district, or they've already gone through construction for an underground utility, will they be, get an, whatever they call it, an exclusion, or a, will they not have to participate in a new underground utility district? Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no additional requests.
No additional requests? Okay. So we will close public comments and move on to item H, the consent calendar. Here we have a motion to, to accept items two through nine on the consent.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember David Lesser and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Amy
Motion passes 5-0.
So now we'll move on to general business. And item number 10, consideration of community mural proposed by the organization Task Force in partnership with L.A. Versus Hate, a coalition led by L.A. County Commission on Human Relations. Parks Recreation Director Lehman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Ailen Stewart, our cultural arts manager, will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As Mark mentioned, I'm Ailen Stewart, and I will be presenting this item today. So this item came to us while the RFP Request or Proposals was out for all of the murals. It originally went to the Cultural Arts Commission, and they felt that while this item was not necessarily perfect for the mural locations and the round one, or that round of murals, it was nevertheless an interesting item. And further on down the line, City Council did ask us to go ahead and come back and bring this item back for, for review. So here we are. Okay. As was mentioned in the staff report titled, Task Force is a company, they are a marketing agency whose job it is to promote various endeavors. In this case, they are promoting L.A. Versus Hate, an organization put together to combat hate and educate people about acceptance and tolerance. Whoops, sorry. In 2018, Task Force with L.A. Versus Hate had a project called the Summer of Murals, and these were some of the murals that they created. These are all what we kind of refer to as community murals, meaning they're not proposing an actual image, they're proposing a concept. So for the most part, this was done in communities that were either marginalized or had experienced some sort of negative interactions. So in this case, this is a mural in El Monte. It's called Come Walk With Me, and it celebrates the diversity particularly of Latin American culture. This is a mural in the Pico Robertson area, and this celebrates the Jewish community. And this is one in Long Beach, celebrating the LGBTQ plus community. Because Manhattan Beach didn't have quite as much of an anchor, if you will, Task Force proposed doing an overall anti-hate or acceptance mural with just a positive message of embracing each other and living peacefully together. This is the process that Task Force is proposing. They are proposing roughly a seven to nine month process during which they will hold several community workshops. They are proposing specifically reaching out to MBUSD and asking them to put them together with about 150 students, who would then meet in three 50, up to 50 person groups to get feedback about how is it that we can be more tolerant of each other. They're also proposing multiple workshops that those students can undergo to, again, learn about tolerance and other things. And from that, they would then make a recommendation on several artists that they have on their roster. Those artists would make proposals of artwork that would be done digitally, and then the community, as well as eventually City Council, would choose which artwork, which piece it would be, that would be selected. If selected, this project would also need a location. We did, staff did reach out to MBUSD, and they felt that they did not have a location that was appropriate for this. However, they were interested in working. If this project were approved, they would help us to connect with those students. So some possible locations are the two walls. You can see one in red, one in blue, on the parking lot, just right outside here. There's also this wall that's kind of staggering down. Any part of it could be utilized for this. There's this wall just on the, what is that, the south facing side of the police station. There's, you can do the upper portion that you can kind of see in red, or the lower portion in that cyan color. This is tough to see on this image, but these are two staircases that you can see behind the tennis courts and kind of by ceramics. So if you were to do a mural similar to what we've just awarded to Charles Bragg with the Sea Lion, where the mural is just on that vertical edge of the stairs, that way you're not calling us, causing a slip hazard, so you can only see the mural if you're kind of looking up the stairs. We also have a brand new building with fire station number two, so there's a couple of opportunities of flat space there. This is the west side, the west facing wall. We know that big pool is in question in terms of what we're doing with it, so this is kind of a wild card out there. We know that might not be, but just, we're starting to run out of walls. So I just put together all the walls that are possible. This is the, it's tough to see on that image, but what's outlined is the, the wall on the restroom. It's kind of curved, so that's a possible location, very highly visible. You could do either of these walls over at Heights. Nice thing about this is this is also where a lot of kids, teens congregate, so they would be able to see the, the work that comes out of this project. Or the other side, again, this would be the, if I've got my cardinal directions right, I think that's the south facing wall. As well as this wall, which we've talked about before, this is the wall next to the skate spot. It's a very long, kind of narrow wall. The only thing with this particular location is we would have to discuss the ownership of the wall because it is adjoining North Row. And that is it on our presentation. Staff recommends that you discuss and provide direction. Also with us is a representative from L.A. Versus Hate, in case you had any questions directly for them.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Colleagues, any questions? Councilmember Lesser?
I have one. I mean, thank you for that presentation. What I read in the proposal is a great deal of facilitation, outreach, engagement with our community, but I'm a little bit confused about the selection process. I've read how there'd be a proposal of three different artists that would be brought to council along with their bios, that would be recommended by Task Force, as well as, I guess, the Commission on Human Relations. I'm a little bit uncertain, though, about the final proposed design and what role council would have with regard to that design, even presuming that we can find a place for it.
Absolutely. So assuming that this went forward and council was interested in this, we would have to schedule it in such a way that this item would be able to come back to council, for council to see those proposals that the artists generate and ultimately vote on, on which one they would like. I'd like to also add one more thing that I neglected to mention. You mentioned the outreach. A lot of this work, again, is, will be done by the school district because it is their, their students that are going to be involved with this. So hopefully, they will assist. I mean, staff will have to assist with this as well, but in terms of outreach, we're hoping the school district will be able to be of assistance.
Great. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, Holworth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. In talking about the involvement at the schools, it says invite up to 150 high school students to participate in a three-step process. And then it says, the L.A. County Commission on Human Relations will provide three workshops for students. Are they three separate workshops?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought, because, because at one point, it sounded like you were saying, well, they divide those 150 kids up into three, but there's three separate workshops?
Correct.
Okay. How much interaction or, you know, interfacing have you had, or have they had with the district?
Staff has reached out to the district. We asked them first and foremost if they were interested in, for example, just taking over the project and, and sort of running with it, if you will. And they felt that they could not absorb this budget, and they also did not have a spot for this mural. However, they, they didn't, you know, they thought it was a great idea to involve their students, so they were willing to assist in the liaising between Task Force, city, and students.
Well, I mean, because I, in the conversations, I think at first it was, is there a space that the school district has? And the school district said, no, we don't have a space. And when asked, when you asked, or they asked, do you think your kids would want to participate, were they told the degree to which, hey, it's, it's three different classes on facility, on the premises, here's the subject matter, and, you know, were they told the extent of the involvement?
We did forward the proposal to them, and we did discuss it with them. They, yeah, they were amenable to it.
That's, huh, okay.
That's it.
Anything else? Okay. Councilmember Montgomery?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two, two questions. Those of you that asked about where this came from, it didn't come internally. This came from Task Force, a creative marketing agency for the L.A. County Commission on Human Relations. So it was not homegrown, first and foremost. Second, the cost, 65,000 to 80,000, who's paying that?
Task Force has asked, is for City Council to pay that from the public trust fund.
Of course they are. They want us to pay.
Correct.
Of course. And the term, if council were to agree on this, after we gave $65,000 of our money, how long do we, long are we agreeing to this? In other words, suppose the mural goes up, how long would it keep it there?
Well, it would then become part of the city's collection, so. Well, it would then become part of the city's collection, so...
Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Test, test. Okay, it'll probably be a delay, because it's like a 30-second delay.
Got you. Stand by.
Okay, stand by. You might hear people through my phone, so let's make sure.
We got this, we got you.
We're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
we as a city have created our own works of art? What is the benefit of bringing in the outside group for their fee to create this project, which includes community engagement here?
So mainly it would be that the community engagement would be facilitated by task force employees, contractors, as opposed to, for example, staff. They are, in a sense, acting as a project manager on a on a project like this. So rather than having staff, you know, propose the curriculum and and find someone to teach the curriculum, in this case, task force is the one doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, questions? Okay, I'll thank you, Elaine. We'll open it up to public comments. And each speaker may speak up for two minutes. And if you spoke about this item before, you can't speak again.
Council Michael Jenkins, 45-year resident mayor. It's indicative of the times we live in that you started tonight's meeting with a caution about people calling in over Zoom using racial epithets and hatred hateful language, a phenomenon that's been occurring in city council meetings around the state. The incidents of hate crimes have risen 18% last year in LA County, spiked dramatically nationwide. We see white supremacists and neo-Nazis brazenly marching in city streets. So is there hate? Yes, there's an epidemic of hate in this country. Mayor, is there hate in Manhattan Beach? Sure, there's hate in Manhattan Beach. The incidence of graffiti have been well-publicized, anti-Semitic graffiti on our school grounds multiple times. How about racial epithets being thrown at cheerleaders from Culver City during a Miracost of Diversity basketball game? Is that hate? Sure, it's hate. We have hate. Is it worth $65,000 to have a community dialogue about what we can do about eradicating hate? I think that's money well spent, honestly. And it results in a mural enhances our urban art landscape. So much the better. We have a mural proposal tonight for a shark. I've got nothing against sharks. But as between a mural that sends a message against hatred that makes the city of Manhattan Beach a leader among communities, sending that message to the world, this is a community that doesn't tolerate hate. This is a community that is for being together. I'd say I'd say it's a good investment. I support it. I hope you do, too.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Mayor, could I? Nothing to mic. I got another text that the people at home are hearing everything times three.
Like an echo?
Yeah. And
They saying that's a bad thing?
Not when I speak, Steve.
Well, if I can offer a solution here, I just spoke with the IT manager about that, the director, and he suggested if people are hearing more than one stream, please close their browsers and open up a new stream. And that should solve it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you. And I'm sorry to be, you know, I don't like to get
That's gotta be frustrating, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So close the browsers and reopen it again?
Yes.
Let's hear some Jeopardy music while we're doing this.
Where were we?
Public comment.
Public comments.
Else? How about on the old Zoom?
Should we just get some sort of
I think there's
There are people on Zoom. Did you want me to call the first one through Zoom?
Yes, okay, well, go ahead.
Heather Kim?
Cannot hear you.
She muted herself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
No, hello?
Yes.
Okay, great. What was it? Okay. There's no need to virtue signal.
Excuse me, Ms. Kim, can you hear us? That's that's also important. Now, can you can you hear us all right?
Yes, I can hear you now. Yes.
I'm sorry, so if we can reset the clock and
Like we're in a Visa commercial, we're trapped.
I'm sorry, Heather, try again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna try it now. Okay. Okay, no need to virtue signal. All this manufactured hate is nauseating, not to mention expensive. As representatives of the citizens of this town, you all have been entrusted to make good good choices that reflect on what the community wants. And this is not it, not to mention this is fiscally irresponsible. It's just that
Ms.
People who are ignorant and intolerant.
Ms. Kim. Ms. Kim, Heather?
What?
Just maybe slow down a little bit and the last 30 seconds, we couldn't hear you, came in and out.
It's her signal.
It's her signal, probably, yeah.
You try again?
I don't know whether it's today's day. Do you hear?
You're you're cutting in and out. Go ahead and try it one more time.
We can send Amanda to the moon.
Are there? Are there any more?
Yes, and she left the meeting as well. She left the meeting. She'll probably come back in.
She'll probably try to reconnect.
Yeah, we'll come back to you, Ms. Kim.
So we have Hildy Stern.
Good luck.
Hello, Mayor Franklin and council members. My name is Hildy Stern, an almost 30-year resident of Manhattan Beach. I'm sorry that I'm not there in person. And I hope you can hear me. I just got a weird message. I wasn't sure what that was. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. I was feeling really under the weather. I didn't want to share that with everybody in council today. So I did want to speak on this. I'm very glad that you've brought this forward. And you heard my comments weeks ago when I asked to bring this forward. And I'm very happy that you're recognizing that this, too, could fit into your priority to bring public art to our community. We've seen some beautiful scenes, nature scenes, contemporary geometric art, and lots of representations of what already exists naturally in our community, like our pier, our lifeguard huts, the waves in the ocean. But this project, and, you know, like all other proposals, has come in from an outside entity as a request, under the request for proposals, and then in other iterations, to be another opportunity to bring a meaningful artistic representation to Manhattan Beach. So this is an opportunity to create something that's really impactful and actually uplifting imagery. As the as the proposal notes, this project could provoke contemplation, conversations, and self-reflection. Its intention is to create a vision for an inclusive and welcoming future. And if you look at the images from the Summer of Solidarity program, which was just just completed this past summer by LA Versus Hate and Task Force, you'll see really uplifting, beautiful images that are embraced by the community. This isn't a negative image that would be not not supported. These are beautiful, uplifting images that I think we would really benefit from here in Manhattan Beach. This is a wonderful intention, and I hope that you will support.
Great. Thank you, Hildy.
We have Heather Kim again on the call.
Okay, Heather, let's try it again. Heather? Can you go over to Hildy's house?
Bringing people together, Mayor Franklin.
So I'm not showing that Heather is accepting the prompt for the audio?
Heather?
I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Okay, okay, so I'm sorry about, I don't know what's going on tonight.
You're doing fine. Go ahead.
Okay, so this was my 11:59 AM public comment. No need to virtue signal. All this manufactured hate is nauseating, not to mention expensive. As representatives of the citizens of this town, you all have been entrusted to make good choices that reflect on what the community wants, and this is not it, not to mention this is fiscally irresponsible. This is not Venice. This is Manhattan Beach with a very different vibe. This mural, by its very existence, insinuates that we are racist and intolerant. Do you guys actually believe that to be true? We've we've got, you know, thugs brazenly walking around without any cares in the world, not neo-Nazis. But the truth doesn't fit the narrative like those of Jussie Smollett. Murals make sense in some urban settings where they prevent vandalism and graffiti, but this is not it. You are diluting the antisemitism and and hate and sorry, hate and intolerance are obvious things that our community does not align with. And having this visual image does not does not change the the few people who actually might be super hateful. And there is a lack of tolerance for diversity of opinion and thought in this community. So it's kind of like, you know, I don't know. If you had like a big Trump sign out there, you know, with MAGA all over it, well, are you going to be welcoming and tolerant of that? No, this is just, this is really dumb and unnecessary. We shouldn't be spending money on this. Okay, you're trying to make something that that is not even there. Trying to create a problem that's not even there. Let's can this and move on to other issues that really affect the quality of our lives every day. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Heather.
There's no additional requests on Zoom.
Okay, on on that, we will close public comments. And Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you. I just want to start by, I guess, addressing or dispensing with this idea that council is not equipped to make decisions regarding art. We make those decisions. In fact, that's what happens at councils, you make decisions. Commissions make recommendations. They don't make decisions. They make recommendations for council to consider and either accept or reject or modify. I appreciate what the speaker was trying to say, but that obviously is coming from a certain viewpoint. You know, the idea that commissioners, because they live here, represent the community, a lot of folks seem to forget council members live here, too. That gets one of the requirements, we have to live here. Yes, we live here. And I think that in terms of of direction, decision-making, as far as making decisions go, you know, as elected officials, we're representing the community in the decisions, and again, selecting commissioners that make recommendations to us. So, you know, as someone who has an art, is anyone here a mechanical engineer? Is anyone here a a finance director or anything like that? I happen to have a degree in fine art. I have been in shows, I have one competition. Does that make me better than any of you to choose it? No. You're here to choose art like everything else, every other decision we make, as to what each one of us feels is best for the community. So I just want to put that out there because we've got a lot of other decisions regarding art tonight, too, and that applies across the board. The idea that we should just rubber stamp whatever is brought to us, anyone who thinks that hasn't met the five of us up there. So, you know, we're going to do what we feel is best for the community. We appreciate the recommendations of our commissioners, but they're not the final call, council is. Having said that, you know, with regard to this, I'm I'm open to suggestions here, but I'll tell you why I voted to bring it back the last time was because we specifically, I wanted to bring it to the district where, frankly, you called manufactured hate. I don't know what that means. I know that we've had some real incidents on our school campuses. And to me, the school campuses really are where this belongs. School district apparently can't find a blank wall across all their their campuses to put this on there. Okay, maybe it's too involved for the kids, this, that, and the other, I don't know. We put it forward to them. We had our ad hoc committee meeting. They said, thanks, but no, we don't have the the place for it. It's not something that that we're interested in doing. So, okay. That, though, to me, was why I brought it back. I'm interested to hear what my colleagues say about any place in the city. But, you know, as far as where incidents have taken place, what we should do about it, to me, the mural is more appropriate there at the schools. The city has taken on a number of initiatives against hate. We've been part of this task force across South Bay. We've got the MB United Against Hate. We've got lots of different things that we're doing, which, to me, are more dynamic in trying to address. We've had past incidents where, of course, we've come out together as a community and held vigils and everything else. So there's no lack of concern or effort in addressing it. A lot of it still has to take place at home, but to the extent that we can, in terms of putting together a mural, again, I think it's more appropriate at the schools. They don't want it. If anyone has a greater suggestion here, I'm open to it, but that's why I brought it back to begin with. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor Pro Tem?
And and I was going to add some context because I think Steve and I both wanted to bring it back after we had said no to it during the work plan. And I wanted to bring it back. First of all, former Mayor Stern asked me to, you know, she thought that there wasn't enough information in a staff report that we saw at that time. And so I said, fine, bring it back. And I have no problem bringing something back that I've I've voted on. So now we have more information. And I'm all for community engagement, and I, that's a piece of this that I really appreciate. And it should be said that there's no amount of hate crime that's okay, right? Less than 10, that sounds great, except if you're the person who's, you know, been a victim of that, right? And when we say graffiti, that's still a hate crime. That is actually, you know, when you see some of the graffiti that's been perpetrated, I guess, you know, it's it's not just graffiti. It's not just a gang sign, which is still unacceptable. So first of all, let's start from that premise. And I think we all agree with that, that there's no acceptable amount. And and I also want to, like Steve, so so much of this was centered around the schools. So in our ad hoc, we talk about it. And when this proposal came forward and we got the full agenda, you know, I talked to folks at the schools. And, you know, they didn't understand everything that was being asked of them. So they haven't weighed in on this at all. So much of this depends on them. I will say that their most recent hateful hateful incident was anti-African-American graffiti. I'll just say that, really awful stuff on, you know, spray painted on a wall there. And the way the school community responded was so appropriate. The school community had to sit in in solidarity with the black students who had been a victim of that. It was an organic and also really appropriate statement of this isn't okay here, right? And I want us to be able to say that every time something like this happens. I so so I I have a problem with the piece about with the schools, and so much of it is involving the schools. And I don't know that the schools are asking for additional curriculum and content on cultural, historical, critical thinking on on all of this. So that's where I'm coming from at this. Well, and the last thing I would say is the the group, Task Force, admitted that there wasn't a critical anchor here in this community, like there was in Pico, Robertson, or other areas, where, okay, here we're going to do something on antisemitism, here we're going to do something on, you know, Latino culture or, you know, conflict there. And they they really couldn't find that, so they they picked this this topic for us. And I don't, I don't, I don't think it's really something that is so well-defined. So that's where I am right now.
I'll go.
I'll go. Next. Councilmember Montgomery?
I think we're all trying to figure out what to do here. I want to summarize it the best I can. I think both Steve and Amy kind of hit
Um, I think both Steve and Amy kind of hit around the edges here, and I'll kind of go right in the middle of it. The first part of it is the money. Those of you who don't think that art is subjective, we can agree, disagree, all you want to. What you can agree with, disagree with is the fact that money is not subjective. Not $1, not $65,000, not $80,000. Here's someone talking about the fact Edison got approved 20% rate. That should wake everybody up. That's number one. Number two, the fact that school district, I don't see school district buying anywhere here. I kick this right back to them and say, look, this is really what we're trying to do with you as our partner. Supposed to be our partner. There has to be space to this somewhere in the school district, and you're buying with the students. So far, that's zero. Um, the idea, I think Mike brought up, community dialogue. I'm more in favor of community dialogue, interactive. If that's your goal, why not town hall like we're doing with the mayor of public safety? Town hall. You want people to interact with you? Have a town hall meeting, not a piece of art. That doesn't do it for me. Now, no one's ever called me and said, hey, the artwork you have is really interactive. I want to talk to you about it. Never happened in 16 years of council. So our ducks aren't matching up here. And I think Amy, Amy said it better. The task force is outside. They couldn't find a critical anchor, so they made a general, uh, description. So it'd all fit under it. That doesn't work for me. So yes, and she gave us her best numbers, said this is what's happened. We're not oblivious to it. We don't like any of it happening, but to draw us in a target and say that you don't really fit our main delivery... I know that we're going to create a general item for you. That's even worse. So don't try to squeeze us in, you know, till a peg doesn't work for us. I think the duplication of effort, as the mayor mentioned, at Bruce's Beach is important to talk about. Some of you were actually here in 2020, and we know what it was like here, and '21, and '22. And look what's happened with Bruce's Beach, and she dedicated the plaque at Bruce's Beach. And what we're doing there with the artwork, we're doing so much that we never thought of before because the times have changed. We get that. But doesn't mean it's never ending. We come to council for every single thing you want to do and say, this is going to help. This is going to help. This is going to help. Then it never ends. So I think that's a process we're going through now, all of us. None of us feel comfortable here with the solution presented tonight. So my proposal is send this back to ad hoc, to the school district. Say, look, we need buy-in from you, one property. If that's not agreement, fine. School district kids buy in, number two. As the mayor pointed out, they're so busy. My niece is busy. Oliver's busy. They can't even get a day out there without taking piano or violin or horseback or sports. Really going to do this? And don't say it's on the city to drive this forward to our parks and rec people. That's not going to happen. So my motion would be to continue this item until ad hoc have a chance to go back to school district, get buy-in one way or the other, then bring it back to council. I'll stop there, Your Honor.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Lesher.
I'm more receptive to this piece because I am concerned about the incidence of hate in our community. What was referenced is that there's been less than 10 in the last year. That is problematic for a community of our size. And the types of incidences that we're experiencing in our schools should be upsetting to everybody. Should be upsetting to all of us. This is not satisfactory to be living in a community without our being more proactive as leaders to try and address that through all different forms of media, of art, of opportunities to try and bring our community together. I welcome a public art initiative that would be welcoming, as was mentioned by our former mayor, Stern, inviting, inclusive. I just see some problems with this specific proposals that have been referenced by my colleagues, including the fact that start with this being inclusive of 150 high school students, up to 150, when, as was mentioned, high school students are busy. And moreover, to the extent we don't have a partnership yet with the school district, which would be the core part of this proposal for engagement with our community, that needs to be settled first and foremost. Second, where would we put it? I'm not entirely pleased with the opportunities presented because there really aren't any good spaces appropriate for this type of mural, but there could be others. I do, I would say it was a reference to Bruce's Beach. The LA County Fire Department lifeguard administrative building on its east side, it's a county property, and the county proposes to be a partner with us. They have blank walls there. Um, the walls themselves would not be suited for a mural. It would have to be something that would be attached to those walls. But that could be something that would be explored, and it certainly would be an appropriate place for it. But it's questions of logistics along those lines that raise questions for me as well as the cost. So I would be supportive of the motion. I see that there has been a motion made that at a minimum, this has to start with a partnership with our school district, particularly if this is going to be based on work being done by high school students who already are carrying heavy loads. So I'll stop there for now.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Napolitano.
Just to say that I agree that of the areas identified, I don't think any were appropriate. You know, what are we really going to get for putting a mural like this on a parking structure? I just don't see that as a, a, um, center of, of critical mass, you know, going by and recognizing. That's why I still think it's more appropriate at the school. And to hit folks where these incidents are taking place, um, you know, as far as the county commission or county building goes, well, I think we could kick it back to the county in general. And, um, you know, Supervisor Mitchell can spend some discretionary money to put that out there if they choose to. I'm not going to tell the county what to do with their building. Um, but other than that, you know, I don't see this coming back to the ad hoc though at this point. I think it's a discussion point for the next school year. We've got three months left. There's finals, there's dances, there's lots of activities. I don't see the kids taking this up now or the school district in the homestretch before school gets out. And I think it's June 13th.
Okay. I'm going to take the opportunity to speak. I agree. Uh, just one, incidents of hate has just got to be a horrible thing for whoever that's directed at and for the people that witness it. Uh, in fact, uh, I, I believe I got accurate information that there were six, uh, events, uh, in 2023. Um, four of them were on school property, four out of the six. So the majority were, were on the school property, which coincides with a lot of what was discussed here. That should be a school solution. Whether or not the perpetrators were school-aged children, I don't know. Um, because it's not, you know, it, it wasn't reported that way. Um, two of them were antisemitic. Uh, one of them was anti-LGBTQ. Uh, one of them was anti-black, and two of them were anti-white. So there's, uh, you know, so there's a mix there. So that means that work has to be done. Uh, it shouldn't be ignored, but I don't also think that it requires a $65,000 solution when there's so many services that are offered. Uh, we saw, um, Alcove, you know, from Beach City's Health District that are directed, that's directed at, you know, school-aged children. It's an after-school, uh, program where they can go and they can, you know, find, find security there and, and, and can be helped. Uh, Miracosta itself and the school district itself has counseling, you know, for these kinds of things. Uh, in terms of, um, you know, the stated goal, which was, um, pardon me, a, a vision for the future of Manhattan Beach in solidarity, you know, the school district is going through that. They're going through a quite laborious process with their, uh, diversity and cultural studies program. It's gonna, you know, they're experimenting with how it, uh, meets the, um, uh, the ethnic studies requirement, you know, from the state. But students will be exposed to that. Uh, and it'll be required, and it will probably be tested and graded. So they're going to see, they're going to see this. They're going to see what's important. They're going to learn these lessons through there, um, in classrooms that they're walking to every day. Okay? Versus, uh, somewhere where this mural could go. Um, and, uh, and, uh, they could see it. Um, the, uh, you know, the, the really terrific thing is that our police department are taking full measures to catch the purveyors of hate and to follow up on these crimes. They don't always, you know, lead to results, but at least the people who are thinking of perpetrating or know that, that they're going to meet, you know, the police, our, our Manhattan Beach Police Department is going to meet it with full force and investigate with full force. So that's good to know. But, you know, I mentioned before, you know, uh, the Bruce's Beach art, you know, the plaque and the art. I mean, that's not only just acknowledging and reconciling and apologizing, you know, for what happened in the past, but also to be uplifting. I mean, I see people there all the time. It's, it's a very calming and, I hope, restorative and helpful process for them. And we've been going through quite a while, uh, and actually are spending $350,000 uh, through the Public Art Trust Fund for some sort of, you know, artwork there to, again, further that message. And then also, I, you know, I've said this before, is just look around Manhattan Beach. I mean, go downtown on the weekend or any day. Go to the beach. Go on, just take the people that are walking on the pier and you look at it at any point in time. And it's all people there that are respectfully of each, of each other, helping each other, being with each other, respecting each other. I mean, that's the Manhattan Beach that we live in. That's the Manhattan Beach, you know, even that visitors come to. That's what they, it seems like that's what they want to seek because that's why they're coming here. And those are tens and tens and tens of thousands of interactions. And life is not perfect. Six incidences that require police follow-up is not acceptable, but life is not perfect. And I think we do a very good job of following up, and, and, um, I think we do a very good job of just providing a welcoming place for people to come and enjoy. Clean air, the ocean, water, playing, biking, running, playing volleyball, everything like that. And a very inclusive environment. I want to, uh, also, I'll, I'll, I'll support, you know, sending it back, but I want to make a suggestion. Uh, Mayor Protem and I, uh, Howarth and I were at the Neptunian Club this weekend on Sunday, and there were, there was an art contest for MBUSD students. And you got to admit, it was remarkable artwork.
I do admit.
I mean, I, first of all, I was extremely intimidated because I can't draw. Uh, I know we have to make decisions about the art, but I am not artistic. But just amazing pieces there, thoughtful, thought-provoking. I would suggest that we even find amongst our very own students in, in Manhattan Beach Unified School District a piece of art that we can promote and use as a mural. And that will give it texture from Manhattan Beach and a connection to Manhattan Beach. So I would probably, uh, suggest that to any, uh, action of the, of ad hoc committee going forward. Uh, but I'm going to go ahead and second, uh, Councilmember Montgomery's, uh, motion.
What is the motion?
Um...
Hmm? I haven't heard the motion.
Then my motion is to send this item back to the ad hoc, to the school district. Number one, if they can't find a spot for a location on school district property, then how about get student buy-in? If they happen to join this project right now, that's a big zero.
So I, and I have, so let me address that, and I also know the comments, but I, I mean, they can't find a spot. They said zero, they said emphatically.
They, they being...
The ad hoc, I mean, the, the, the district staff and the, the school board representatives. To get student buy-in, you'd almost have to advertise for applications and then get the applications. And I don't think you would do that if they're saying, you know. So I, 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 I don't know that it ma- that makes sense.
I think we give them a chance to say no.
Okay. Another cha- we could, I'm, that's okay. I mean, obviously, we get to vote on that. Can I make a comment or another comment?
Sure. Yeah.
Um, you know, you, you sort of sparked some, an idea for me, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, you know, and this money, we, we, we have a public art fund, so there's that. For me, it's not about the money, but I, I wonder if we couldn't create some sort of art contest, right? That's a legacy event that happens every year that maybe deals with, you know, topics maybe such as this. Um, or if we couldn't take some of this money or allocate money in the future. You know, we talk about Bruce's Beach, um, and we all in this room and probably everyone watching tonight really, really know now of the history. But the schools don't have any way to really teach that very well. You know, everyone says, well, just teach it. It's easy. You know, you need a little curriculum packet, and you need it per age group, and you need like field trips, and you need to find time in the, you know, maybe we pay for that to be created. And we, you know, using the incredible resources that the committee, the task force came up with. You know, that would be meaningful, and it's, that's only related to Bruce's Beach. So I, I, I can hear, I can hear other comments, but I'm talking about ongoing efforts like that. Um, you know, asking the Jewish community, what, what is it that would make you feel safe? You know, uh, asking the African-American community, asking, and, you know, because communities do this. West Hollywood has a Jewish community safety plan, African-American safety plan. Very low cost, very simple. I, you know, that, so that, those are my final thoughts, so.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you. I don't know where that sends us, Mayor Protem. At this point, I'm not getting any sense of support for going forward. I get the sense of support, let's go back and put it to the schools again. They already said no. I don't see the point of asking again. They're not gascon. Nobody? All right. Um, we can only be turned down so many times. But, you know, without support for this, if there is this idea to come up with something else, I say just let's come up with something else and bring that back under other council business and let this just go.
Your Honor, can I go back to that? I think if the, if you only, the council is that and the ad hoc committee, that the school district would say no to locations, the student buy-in is also crucial to that second piece. But I like Councilor Lesher's idea that just we can't find a spot and the district can't find a spot, why not their own LA task force look at the lifeguard building, which is county-owned, and say, look, it's your building. It's your task force. Why don't you put it right in your own building, which gets more views than the artwork we have in our city? People walking by, they're stranded every day, double, more than doubles what you'd see anywhere else in the city. Why don't we go back and ask them? Hey, perfect spot. Want a solution? Here's your solution.
Maybe we should let the coalition ask them.
Yes.
Well, the coalition is empowered. Are we empowering the coalition?
It's not a city building. The coalition can go ask LA County and do something.
They can do whatever they want. They're not a city organization.
Right. And they can talk to the county about the county building.
I'm fine with that.
Unless you want to make a request of the county to do this on the county building.
What's your idea about finding one to students to do your artwork?
I mean, no, that's a different, I agree with Steve. That's a different thing altogether. I mean, it's, it's, um, we, remember, the Cultural Arts Commission said this doesn't fit the scope of our RFPs. This is not appropriate as the mural project as stated. It could be something in the future. It could be this proactive piece. So we're sitting here really, we're really trying, oh, there goes my screen. We're trying to make this work. Um, sorry, my screen's doing things. And, you know, it's, it might be too, it might not work.
Why don't we just suggest that we ask the county to find it, approve the lifeguard building task force. Coalition, talk to them, and we step out of it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, that'd be fine, but then who's going to pay? But then they pay for it.
They pay for it.
Right?
They have money. County has plenty of money.
I mean, that's the other thing. Like, why, why is this county, they do have this money, why, right? And then if the county was paying for it, residents of El Segundo and Hermosa could participate as well. We, we could open it up beyond Manhattan Beach.
I agree.
Which they would like to participate.
So no motion needed here. I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah.
And ask that we can ask the task force coalition to ask Supervisor Mitchell if they would consider putting their artwork up on their own building and lifeguard station. And like to Amy's point, maybe invite Hermosa and El Segundo as part of that process too. We step out of it.
And, and just to clarify again, the Arts Commission forwarded their, the other, um, murals for approval. This one was not part, it was deemed, I looked at the staff report, inappropriate as a response to the RFP, but to consider for proactive vision, future projects.
Right. So a question, Your Honor, and do we, that's just direction to staff? So question, Your Honor, and do we, did just direction the staff, we don't need to vote on this, do we? Just send a letter to Supervisor Mitchell regarding the lifeguard building?
And paying for it.
Direction's fine.
Okay. Okay, I'm good.
Moving on. To item number 11, consideration of location and cost for the shark mural, the aforementioned shark mural.
God.
By artist Eric Snyder and disbursement of up to $65,000 from the Public Art Trust Fund, Parks and Recreation Director Lehman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Alan Stewart will also be presenting this item.
Good evening, everyone. So, uh, let's see if this works. So just as a reminder to everyone as to how this item got to us, this mural was originally proposed for the Police Department slash Fire, Police slash Fire Department wall facing the post office. However, City Council felt that it was not appropriate for that location and asked staff to come back with other locations where this piece might be more appropriate than might, might find a better home. So we looked around at different walls and different possibilities and put together a presentation of what might be available. One thing to keep in mind on a piece like this, and this also came from the artist, I spoke to the artist as well via email, is that this piece really works, if you will, when it is very large. It has to be kind of larger than life, otherwise you're just sort of looking at a fish in a window. So, lot less exciting. And one of the things that may be sort of tough to realize at first is what makes this piece physically work is that there's a very large cast shadow from the shark. This shadow, and you can see it kind of in this image, takes up about a third of the height of the piece. So whatever location you choose, you're losing a third of it to the shadow, otherwise it won't look like what, like this 3D piece. So one of the locations that staff were asked to explore is the wall behind, on the parking lot. So we mocked it up both on the, kind of, the left and the right side of the wall. Certainly on this side of the wall, it is petite. Again, going backwards, it can be done a little bit larger here. It's a good surface for painting, for, this is, again, a special piece where it needs a much more flat surface than a lot of other murals because it's so detailed. Otherwise, it just won't look like a 3D shark. So here's Option 1A and Option 1B are these two locations. We then started to get a little bit creative because, again, we're, we're running out of large, flat, clean walls. So here's another option on the side where the shadow could then be painted onto the sidewalk. So that's a, that's a space where we can kind of, so you can see the shadow is on the sidewalk. And I apologize, I was mocking these up rather quickly, so they're, they're not the best mock-ups. Also, to keep in mind is that there are other artworks literally visible from the same location as this one. So you'll see that some of the locations that we just saw for LA versus hate are not present here because, again, they're just too small or too narrow. So one, another option would be for Fire Station 2. It's got kind of this balcony element that you can see on the left and then it's got a larger site on the right. Another thing to keep in mind, particularly with this mural, is whereas with other murals, we can kind of work around elements like, you know, building numbers or lighting fixtures or windows and things like that, with this one, because of the 3D effect, it, it doesn't really bode well when you disrupt that 3D effect with a lighting fixture. And on the image on the, my right, there actually is a lighting fixture and the building number that's in the way. The Cultural Arts Commission's recommendation was either one of these two sites. So this is the west-facing wall of the new Fire Station 2. And so if you were to put the shark on the left side closer to Manhattan Beach Boulevard, that's what it would look like. Again, there's a window kind of in the way. And if you were to put it on the right, it would look roughly like this. You can kind of avoid the window that's there. But something to keep in mind, there's also a brand-new tree that's just been planted right in front of it. So we, maybe that could be.
Tree shark, freshwater tree shark.
Right, it's a tree shark. Again, we're not sure what's happening with Beg Pool, but could be fun. Jaws, cool. For some of these locations. For some of these locations, we may want the artist to maybe refine the design. Something to keep in mind, again, we're literally taking that, something that was designed for one location and kind of superimposing it onto other locations, so the artist may be able to fine-tune it a little bit. And those are all of the locations we identified as viable. Please discuss and provide direction.
Okay, council, questions? Councilmember Montgomery?
Thank you, Your Honor. And on the location 2, difference in location 2 size versus location 6? I mean, pretty ironic, you put a pool, a shark, next to a pool. You gotta be thinking what that does and you see that right in front of your face. But outside of that irony, what about the size difference? Are there, is there just the way it looks here in the Photoshop?
Sorry, location 2.
Versus location 6?
So the parking lot, right, right before the parking lot.
So, look, if you're looking at this wall on the parking lot, the shadow can be on the ground, which still gives you that 3D effect.
Size of the actual artwork there versus location 6 size?
It would actually probably be potentially a little, I didn't go out there with a tape measure. That wall is about six feet tall. Beg Pool is probably closer to eight or nine feet tall. So it would be about the same size, except the shadow would probably have to go on the building. I don't think there's, let me take a look, I don't think there's enough sidewalk space that you could put that shadow. This is just zoomed out, you're just standing much farther away from it.
Got it, that's it, thank you. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay, Councilmember Napolitan.
Well, I was wondering about the water tower. But the, the other option would be Pec Reservoir or our water treatment tank, our freestanding water treatment tank there, that's certainly big enough or tall enough. You'd have to wrap around.
I have not looked at that location, I'll be honest.
Circular?
Yeah, it's, it's a, a, well.
Yeah, it's.
Are you talking about Block 35?
Yeah, the water treatment, the, the, what is it, copper-colored.
It's the ground level.
Yeah. The new one that we have, the water treatment that we have next to Pec Reservoir now.
The filtration?
Yeah, the new building.
Understood.
Do we have, yeah. I mean, you can see that from Beg Field pretty well. We don't have anything growing in front of that, right?
Not yet, I'm not sure what the landscaping plan is right there. It's something, certainly, if the council wants to put art there, we could explore that. I would say the ground-level reservoir at Block 35, we've got a project to demolish and replace in the, that's the CIP, so I would say that's probably not a good idea.
Right.
Such a funny idea.
Thank you.
Okay. A lot of water tower. Awesome. I'm going to go ahead and ask a question. The surface area of that beautiful, gorgeous, brand-new Fire Station 2, is it, you said that the, that the Manhattan Beach Boulevard facing would not be suitable?
Well, I mean, you can see it in the two mock-ups, it's not the largest.
Okay, and then, location 5C and D, that is, it's west wall facing that side street.
Correct, which, which you can see, so if you are driving east on Manhattan Beach Boulevard, both sides, especially because there is no vegetation right now, and, I mean, the little trees that have been planted are just very, very small. So it is visible.
And people would see that and maybe be distracted on their way.
Yeah.
Be distracted from looking at their phones.
Trying to find a picture of the water tank.
Okay, and, and then we've got Beg Pool, okay. No more questions for me? Anybody else? Okay, we'll open it up to public comment? Anybody here to make a comment about it?
Well, I hope that everybody got a chance to read my lengthy email. Gary McCauley, good evening. I just want to say about the shark mural. I'm having a real hard time reaching even any understanding why we're doing a shark mural in Manhattan Beach. I mean, we're next to the ocean, but sharks are not really a thing in this community, honestly. We've had one incident with a shark in over 100 years and yet we're doing a lunging shark leaping out at everybody. And, and we're considering putting it on the, on the east side, way away from the ocean? On the side of the Fire Department? I mean, that just has no, that makes no sense to me at all. Why are we putting a shark mural on a Fire Department? The Fire Department is the Fire Department, it deserves a little more respect than a novelty mural. And that's what we're putting up with this 3D mural. So please consider finding some better location, some more appropriate location for a shark mural than the side of the Fire Department. The Fire Department is the Fire Department. And the building, as, as the mayor pointed out, was beautifully done. I don't think that the architect, when he built his, when he designed this thing, had anything in mind that it was supposed to be a platform for a cute mural. It's a lovely building, don't, don't stick a shark on it. Find another spot for it. Even Beg Pool is a better location, honestly. Although I do kind of like your suggestion, Mr. Napolitan. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Gary. Anybody else? Martha and Zune? Oh, I'm sorry, wait.
Can you put it inside the pool? That would look good.
No, it's a great idea.
That'll.
One will come back for their second lesson.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. Okay, um, okay, Zune?
Heather Kim?
Go ahead, Heather.
Yes, I just find the, yeah, all the proposed placements to be pretty inappropriate. I think the best place would be like at the aquarium, for instance, you know, maybe facing inland on that side, or wherever there is some open space. If that seems like the most appropriate place for this, putting it on our new Fire Station, I think it's just distracting for drivers. It doesn't make a lot of sense, as the previous comments, commenter made. And I don't understand the point of trying to take up every piece of wall in our city to adorn it with this, you know, murals and all this art. Like, that, I don't understand what, what the point is. And I think it's a very well-done piece by the artist, he's obviously very talented, but this is something that belongs more like at Universal Studios or Long Beach Aquarium or something like that. It's, it's not, it doesn't make sense to do it here in Manhattan Beach. So I oppose this project altogether. However, if it must be painted somewhere, let's talk about doing it at the aquarium. That makes the most sense to me, thank you.
Great, thank you, Heather. Anybody else?
There's no additional requests.
Okay, we'll, we'll close public comments. So councilmembers, colleagues?
I'll start us off.
MTN?
I think it's a great project, whimsical idea. The aquarium wouldn't work because it's a round structure, same with the water tower, unless you do a circular the whole way. But of the two, I do think it's pretty funny, the Beg Pool, you can't really see it unless you go to a pool every day. But the civic-centered ones, west, west side, civic center, parking lot, people go to the farmer's market, they're going to see it, go to the garage during the weekend. It's a, it's a safe location, you're not driving by 30 miles an hour looking at your phone and all of a sudden there's a shark in front of you. So, have all those safe places to put it to? I don't, the Fire Department doesn't, doesn't need it, you have trees blowing the way, it's a wrong spot. So of all the locations, I think 13th, facing west, the sidewalk next to the farmer's market makes the most sense. And entry to the parking garage, where she showed it. Ellen, could you show that spot again for me, M3? The 13th Street Civic Center, it faces west.
It's this one, it faces west.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Then there's, then there's the other one.
Location 2 on this one.
Yeah, in the entrance, on the entrance.
To the garage, next to the tile.
Entrance to the parking garage.
Yeah, next to the tile piece, I'll pull it up as soon as the PowerPoint.
That we don't know what I'm talking about.
I'm a little crowded with that, but it is a great location.
Yeah, because people are going to walk by and see it.
I love the shadow on the sidewalk.
Shadow's classic.
Classic.
You know, you gotta make it, that one, there you go, that's what I'm looking for, location 2.
That's it, thank you, Your Honor. Okay, Councilmember Napolitan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't know where we lost our whimsy along the way, but I'm not opposed to it either. And having things out of place, to me, is, is fine sometimes and this is not an offensive thing. You know, when we talk about having to cover every square inch of, every building in Manhattan Beach with murals, we've got about probably more than 20,000 structures in Manhattan Beach. I think we've approved 15 murals, maybe 20 at tops. So I don't think we're, we've been inundated yet. I think we want to be careful of putting them too many too close together. You know, if we're talking about a place to put it, I'm looking at the one, what is this one? 1B, location 1B, except instead of squeezing in above the doors to whatever those are, I suppose they're air conditioning units or something, why not move it to the left where you have a full wall there without the doors?
Well, that's the other.
That's the other one.
That's 1A.
1A.
1A. Okay, then let's do 1A. That's, I'd favor 1A. Because the other, the problem with the other one, the west-facing one, to me, is that it's right next to the tile mural. And that's a little bit too crowded there for art. Let's spread it around, that's mine.
Okay, Councilmember Lesser?
I think the piece is fun. I love the shadows, I love the whimsy of it. I like it when it's on a larger scale. I just don't like any of these locations and I can't get beyond the symbolism. I, I just don't see it, I don't see it here. So I will not be in favor of moving forward at any of the proposed locations.
Okay, Mayor Protam, Hoorth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I, I do think sharks have something to do with Manhattan Beach. I mean, I was mayor when there was a shark on a line and closed the pier for a minute. Probably shouldn't have done that, turns out, but I really think about, and, and we now know that around the pier, it's actually a shark nursery. You know, I mean, the water, they are definitely a part of our culture now. They might not have always been. I like this mural a lot and I want to have it. So, I agree that location 2, well, awesome because it's big and it's right there. It loses something because it's next to other piece. I think it'd be fun if location 1B, could it be moved? I, I don't think it'll work because it won't be large enough, but if it was to go right above the entryway, so as you're driving in, it'd be like, wait, what? Yeah.
There's a big sign there.
Very small, though.
Okay.
And there's a sign, parking.
So I would go with location 1A, but I definitely am in favor of this and would want to do this. And I, I mean, I really did like the idea, although I don't think it works visually on the round part of like the water tank or the water tower, because that might mess up the 3D effect, although maybe not. There's an awful lot of visual wit in having it related to something water-based. And if Beg Pool, if Beg Pool were, but I don't want to put money into something at Beg Pool because I still believe that we're going to build another pool. Knock it down, so, but it would be hilarious, and kids would love it if it was there. But, so I'd go with 1A.
Okay, great, I'll, I'll bring this home. I don't think that every blank space has to be covered. We have so much natural beauty in the city. This is, again, I mentioned earlier about. This is, again, I mentioned earlier about how many people come here. It isn't because of the murals on the walls. In fact, they're probably a detriment to someone coming here and wanting to get away from clutter, and someone's interpretation of whatever, just because there's a blank spot. On the side of this very building, though, that's very appropriate. You know, Beau Bridges' photograph of, it's a beautiful photograph of the pier there, and it's a great spot for it. It fits there, everything. It's not coming at you, it's drawing you in. There's nothing, and that's what good art does, it draws you in. At least I sort of know that. This doesn't draw me in. And I don't want to get melodramatic here, but, you know, I was hearing on the radio earlier today, someone was interviewing, or talked about his meeting the fellow who wrote the screenplay for Joss. And we all know Michael Critson wrote the novel. I don't even remember the guy's name of who wrote.
Peter Benchley.
It's Peter Benchley.
Or, Peter Benchley, sorry. So that was our generation of the really scary, I mean, is anybody going to admit here that they jumped out of their seats when that head came down and the like, and they were scared of that shark? People have said that they remembered that the rest of their lives, that it affected their beach-going habits and things like that. Now, we look at this and we go, ah, okay, you know, it's Bruce the great, you know, Bruce the mechanical shark. But it could be traumatic. I have, you know, a nine-year-old, seven-year-old, and a four-year-old grandkids, okay? I think that they would kind of, maybe the nine-year-old would think it'd be okay, but the, you know, the four-year-old who's inquisitive might not be so enamored of it, and might be a little more reluctant to go into the ocean, which we're just now having him explore. So I voted this down on the, on the fire station, because I just didn't think it was appropriate. I just don't think it's an appropriate piece of art. Perhaps you might have room on your home that we could, we could arrange to get it painted there, but I'm just going to, I don't think any location will work, and I'm just going to vote no. Do we have a motion?
So I'm, and I appreciate your comments, and, you know, that's, we get to disagree, although I think Macy could handle anything.
But that, she's a nine-year-old.
Okay. So I make a motion for location 1A, Civic Plaza Parking Lot Wall, for this mural. And I've been seconded by you, right?
So we have a motion to accept the mural on location 1A, Civic Plaza Parking Lot Wall, by, whoop, what happened? Oh, by Mayor Protam Horwath, and seconded by Councilmember Montgomery.
Yes.
See, I'm afraid, I'm all.
Flustered.
I'm all shook up.
Maybe we can get Spielberg down here, Dan.
And the maker of the motion, that's also to allocate the funds?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Second.
Motion passes through to two.
Oh, upper. Okay, can we just take a quick break? So it's 14, come back at 8:20? Can that be enough?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we're live.
Thank you, welcome back. We're ready to proceed with item 12, consideration of authorizing advertisement of the Wayfinding Phase One Vehicle Parking and Pedestrian Sign Improvement Project for construction. And we have Public Works Director Lee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, City Engineer Katie Doherty will give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Franklin, Honorable Members of the City Council. I'm here to request authority to advertise the Wayfinding Phase One project primarily and also to discuss the street color signs for the pole-mounted street identifiers. So, the last time, let me see, I have a quick timeline. This whole effort began in 2014. That's when the city decided to pursue a unified signage program for the city. In 2017, the Beach Classic Design was selected. In 2019, the Wayfinding Master Plan was approved. 2023, we approved some edits to the master plan. These came about as a result of a constructibility analysis that we had done on the plans and identified some things that weren't quite consistent. So, we came back with those edits in 2023. Since then, we have re-engaged Selbert Perkins, the original designer, to incorporate those changes. We're back now, having incorporated all of the comments we got last year, and also to discuss the street sign color. So, the last time we were here is July 18, 2023. The five motions that were made at that meeting were to, were confirmed that we were going to stick with the Spartan MB font for all the signs. We are using the pier symbol that matches our logo versus the pier symbol that was originally proposed. And all of the street identifier signs will be double-sided. We were directed to include directory signage in the downtown area and north Manhattan Beach business districts in this Phase One project, which has been included. We directed to do like-for-like sizing as much as possible, not increase the size of signs if we didn't need to, and not to implement any of the large monument signs until those designs were brought back to City Council. So, those have been removed from this plan set until we bring those back. And last was that the previous actions were not a project under SEQA. So, the Phase One scope is primarily for parking signage in the business areas. They are identifier signs and off-site directional signage to get to the parking structures. So, here's a quick image of what is included. I'll note that the large, it's labeled A03 bottom left, it says Lot 2 on it, that is not being included. That was a very tall 12-foot sign that was previously proposed, so those have been removed. And also, the façades that were proposed for the parking structures, the image is cut off, but it had a surfer on it, that is not being implemented. But the signs that are above, where it says Lot 3, sorry, bottom right, where it says Lot 4, that will be done, just not the facade behind it. So, in total, the project will install 82 new signs and remove 123 existing signs. So, for the street sign color, this is specifically related to the pole-mounted street identifier signs within the neighborhoods. The overhead signs on the larger collector streets will be white, illuminated white signs. But the discussion here is whether or not we want to stick with what's white, which is what's identified in the master plan, or entertain the blue color. So, we can have that discussion after my presentation. Oh, here we go. So, our recommendations are to allow staff to advertise the Phase One project, which is for parking-related signs in the business areas, and to discuss and provide direction on the street name signs for the neighborhoods. And that concludes my presentation. I am here for questions.
Okay, great. Mayor Protem Horwath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you go back to the last, page 5, the street sign color. It's amazing, you know, what was this, back in 2014? So many, it's, things take a while, folks.
Ten years, we're still talking about colors of street signs.
I know it. Anyway, and part of that's on me because I know that after we had talked in July, I kind of, I came back and I said, hey, I have this epiphany about like the smaller street sign, or the numbered, the signs, the pole signs, you know, sticking with sort of that original design. So, where it says 12th Street, the picture of the 12th Street sign, are we proposing to replace that with the blue sign in the right-hand illustration?
What do you mean by original design with the shoe symbol on top?
Yeah. Let me ask my, yeah.
Well, I'm trying to understand what you're asking about same design.
So, I am asking, so there's two images on this page. One is a photograph of the 12th Street sign, which is, you're calling it the shoe.
Well, right, because I'm talking about the symbol up top, are you talking about replacing that symbol with our new logo, or are you talking about keeping that symbol?
I'm going to ask that very question. You will let me finish?
Well, it's a choice. It's not a, it's your choice, which one do you prefer?
Let me get there. First, I want to, I need to ask a question. What the heck? I need to ask a question. You know, kids, kids. My question first, before I get to my preference, is on the right, you have a blue sign that says Highland Avenue. Are you talking about replacing signs like 12th Street with just a blue square sign, or a rectangular sign? Or are we, are you thinking, or are we still going to use, first of all, the shape of the current sign that's on 12th Street? So, I need to understand that first, and I'm going to give my opinion on the logo sun thing.
So, my understanding of the motion was that we would, instead of using the white sign on Highland options, it would be not using the white one, but using the blue one instead on the Highland options. The, I put the 12th Street one there just for visual reference of what's out there now.
Okay.
But...
So, my, so my preference would be, so my preference would be to use the original, so I'm going to say shape, because that, the 12th Street sign, you know, has the bulb out, if you will, on the top. And then, instead of the sun, I would put our logo there. I just, I like that. And the reason, well, I can, I can, I'll give more comments during, after public comments. But, so that, first of all, it's a clarifying question. They're saying, no, the signs on like, the little streets would be just the blue, simple rectangle with the logo and the white lettering. And I'm saying, hey, I still sort of like these other, and the reason was, you know, somebody had given my son a graduation present with our street, and it was cut like that, and it was like, that's iconic, whereas the blue rectangular, no one's going to give graduation presents of just like rectangular with that on it.
Was that a question?
No, it was a comment.
All right. Councilmember, are you finished?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, Councilmember Napolitano?
I'm going to interrupt you though.
I'm trying to figure out what the question is. I mean...
There was a question, I did, and it...
How, how can you match my kid's graduation present? No, I mean, what I'm trying to find, what blue are we talking about? Do we have an example of the blue that we're, people have said we should do or go back to?
The blue identified in the master plan is closer to the one that's shown on the Highland sign on the right. That's, that's the blue, that's, that's proposed as part of the master plan.
Okay, because that looks kind of greenish to me, and so, people who, people who, I don't know, because, that's why I asked, because people who went ballistic over the fact that we're not using blue anymore, now that we would use a different blue, people are going to be upset about that. I mean, so, I guess my comment at the end of my question is, if absence makes the heart grow fonder, the every three years this comes back to me, I like it less and less. I don't like the font anymore, I don't like the color anymore, I don't like anything about it anymore.
Actually, I have myself up next, and I just have a quick question. What was found, I wasn't on council nine years ago. What was found as the reason to remove the shoe design? Again, the iconic shoe design?
My understanding was to, to update it to the new look, the new logo, the new branding for the city.
Okay.
And make it consistent, since there's so many varieties of signs around the city.
And I'm going ahead and ask one more. So, in the blue slash green, because it looks bluer on my printed one.
To your left, it shows blue.
So, that logo and the blue Highland Avenue sign, is it just monocolored? It's just, it's blue on white, you don't have any of the...
White on blue.
White on blue? You don't have any of the sunset or anything like that in our current logo?
That's correct, yeah, that's how it's currently proposed.
And is there a reason for that? Why you can't do that on the blue, like you can on the Highland, you know, on the, on the white one?
Not, not a specific reason. I think that's the way the graphic designer chose to show it, but we could explore that as well, putting color in the logo.
I'd kind of like to see that, because we do have that.
I agree.
Yep.
Right? Okay. And Councilmember Lesser?
Let me confirm the most immediate issue before council this evening, is whether or not staff can go out to bid for signage for the vehicle parking, Phase One of the vehicle parking and pedestrian sign improvement. Is that what staff most immediately needs with regard to moving forward on wayfinding signs?
Yes, that's correct. And to clarify, these specific signs are not included in the Phase One, they're in a future phase of implementation.
As regard to this more immediate question, I think it's slide number four. I had a question. Is the proposal to go with this white background signage for our parking structures mutually exclusive of our street signs? In other words, could the signage for our parking structures be the inverse of the blue signs if there's a council majority that wants blue signs? And just have a white sign, consistent with the palette that has been selected, that's white and has the blue, so then it's reversed for street signs?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Anybody else's comments?
Not a chance.
Put a shark on the sign, sorry.
So, we will, that's, that's an idea. Let's open it up to public comments.
Ray's here.
Can you beat your last one of two words?
I know, right? Let me tell you one of my favorite things about the signs in the South Bay. It's easy to figure out what city you're in. The blue signs are Manhattan, the brown ones are Hermosa, the green ones are Redondo. And since a lot of our city lines aren't necessarily straight, and they zigzag a little bit, it's nice to have that differentiation, so when you're driving, you can figure out which side of the street, you know, that side's Redondo, that side's Manhattan, the side's Hermosa, that side's Manhattan. So, just nice to have, signs are clearly different than our neighboring cities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Chambers? How about Zoom?
Heather Kim.
Yeah, I really hate the new signs that are up now, the white ones. Honestly, it, I think it's a safety issue. I, when they first came up, I had a hard time adjusting to, to it and like, being able to even read the signs. And my daughter, who took a very, very basic like, design course in high school, said, yeah, that's a really awful design, because the, the color, that white color should not be the background color like that, and maybe it was something to do with the font as well. I'm not sure. But anyways, she, she commented about how poorly designed it was. So then I thought, maybe I'm looking at it through, like, we're Asians, so maybe Asian people look at it differently. So, I asked like, white people. And my white friends were actually saying the same thing, like, yeah, these signs are horrible, and they're really hard to see. So, I, I find that it's just a safety issue, and when something's not, you know, broken, why are you going to, you know, mess with it? I, I vote to bring back the original, blue, normal, you know, very iconic, as someone said, Manhattan Beach street signs. They were easy to read, and they were beautiful, and we just need to bring it back. We're trying to, we're trying to, you know, make it look cool and stuff, and it doesn't look cool, and it's hard to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
We have Jim Burton.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my two cents, I like, I would agree with, I guess, the last two callers, but I like the original, I like our, our current blue signs. However, I'm not going to be upset if the council votes to change it to a different color, I'll live with it. But my two cents is I, I like the original, and certainly have enjoyed the colors and going from one city to another here in the South Bay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Changing the color scheme.
There's no additional requests.
Okay, so, close public comments.
I'll start us off, Your Honor. Thank you. I remember, I wasn't here in '14, well, Steve and Joe, but watched it from the sidelines, actually, other cities went to white on the main thoroughfares, because they are more visible than blue. I'm not the expert that Eric is a traffic engineer, or a police chief, or a fire chief behind me telling the whites more visible. That's, I like that white theme on our main thoroughfares, clearly visible. I don't care if the sun is in your face, you can still see the white, whether you see the blue. On the secondary streets and the residential streets, I think the blue, whether you go with Councilwoman May Pretend Hohwirth's, blue with the shoe sign or not, that's fine, but the main streets are white, it's definitely clearly visible. Whether you want to change the font around, then we'll talk about it three years from now. But we're, done this 10 years talking about street signs. We need to get off the dime here and make a decision and stick with it one way or the other, but I'm making a motion to approve the Phase One section of this, approve the advertising of the Wayfinding Phase One Vehicle Parking and Pedestrian Sign Improvement Program, and then council can discuss the second phase about color scheme after that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Mayor Protem Hohwath?
Thank you. Well, I've seconded your motion to approve the Phase One, and Phase One, you'll notice, is, is the white background. I too am for just talking about the future, if you will, the white signs that we have currently been putting up on the major thoroughfares with the multicolored logo. And I know exactly what you mean, Steve, like, I like the font less and less, but I'm living with it. Like, you know, like, that's what we just, I'm fine with that, you know, especially, so leave that. You know, I, I think, at a minimum, the, the street signs for the, you know, I don't know what we're calling them, should be blue, they should be the original blue, I think. And I like Joe's idea of maybe a multicolored logo. That would be, I'd accept that. I still prefer, prefer the shoe, the shoe design with the blue, and maybe the logo instead of the sun, but I would, and I don't know if we're deciding that today, but white, and at a minimum, blue, and there you go.
Okay. Councilmember Napolitano?
Thank you. I think there is still a problem with the font and the sense that it is not narrow enough, as we heard at a prior presentation, to fit all the names of some of our streets on there as efficiently as they have in the past. The problem with the blue versus white, there is, there are cities that have white street signs. Beverly Hills is a good example of that, they're black and white. For Mr. Joseph, though, Redondo has chosen now to go blue.
There you go.
Oh.
So, they have changed their color, their, for their street signs going forward to blue. So, we're not going to be original in that sense, doesn't mean we can't keep blue for ourselves, I'm fine with that. I do not think that we should start mixing and matching more than one logo, though. The, whatever logo which is not consistent on every street sign, on our, along our residential streets, that's on there now, I believe should be replaced with our new city logo in color, whether it's the shape of the street sign. I can only guess that there might be an added cost, because it's two pieces of metal bound together rather than one rectangular piece that you can have back and forth. I don't know what the cost difference is there, I'm imagining there, there is some.
Great point.
I also ask about timeframe.
I think it would be minimal, they're, they're cut from one solid piece of, of metal, so they're just, they're just cut out that way, it's not two pieces that are put together.
It's not on both sides, because there's a gap in between them.
You mean the double-sided part of it? I think they'd both be double-sided.
No, the, the current ones that are there now.
Okay. Not sure.
The 12th Street sign, if you look at that, they're this thick, because they're, they're hollow.
Between, right, so, so there, there's another sign on the other side?
Right.
Right. I think that would be the case, no matter the, the sign.
The new signs would be...
Would be the same.
The same?
Yes.
It'd be two signs?
Yes, yeah.
As it was presented, it looks like it's one with just print on both sides, one piece of metal.
Yeah, those images were actually for a one-sided sign, and at the last meeting, we decided to do double-sided, so they will look more like the, the one, what you're describing.
Good evening, Mayor members, City Council, I'm Harry Zandvliet. Going way back when, those street name signs were double-sided on two plates, they were porcelain, or they are porcelain, and that's why they had to be two, two pieces of metal. Now, we don't use that anymore, it's one sheet of metal, double-sided printing, and then it's attached to the, to the pole.
Okay.
And I think there's value in having the, the old signs when we resell them, because they're classic.
You can keep the shape, but I don't want to have multiple logos. I think we've chosen one logo, it should apply across the city, rather than doing it, you know, here, there, and other places. If you want blue, whatever.
Councilmember Lesser?
I'm supportive of the, of the measure, but I, I just need to make a couple observations if I could. I was on council along with Councilmember Hohwirth 10 years ago when we started down this road, sorry for all those that have had to suffer through this. The idea was to try and come up with a, a color palette, to have some sort of simplification of our signage throughout our city, and to make it clear, to make it easier, because we had multiple different kinds of signs that needed to be updated. About five years ago, I think it was observed that our blue color in the palette that we sort of arrived at, looked a great deal like another city, Santa Monica. And thus, we wanted to come up with something else, so we went, as I recall, towards something or of a quote, beach theme, I think it was called, with the white. Problem was, I was one who was not in favor of going white. I appreciate the blue, I really value it, I think it does provide distinctive character to our community. So, what I'm looking to do here is to give Public Works Department direction with regard to what they most seek, which is to update the signage, as was stated earlier, for our parking lots, and it's part of the motion, and the motion has already been made. So, I will be supportive of the motion to move forward and still retain the blue for the street signs, and we can put our new logo on it.
That's it. Councilmember Montgomery?
Katie, just one question for you. The answer about the cost difference, what about timing difference?
For rolling out the, the new signs?
Yes.
That is slated for a couple of years out, to roll out these signs, I want, I can't remember the five-year CIP right now, but I think it's 2028.
Perfect. One year for three-year timeframe, and all.
Great.
Start on Fifth Street.
I want my sign.
So, I only, I only wish we had not mentioned the value of the old signs, because now, that will be opportunistic for...
Metlock Pottery Collectors?
Coming in and stealing our signs, and we're three years away from replacing.
Mural.
So, so my question is this, the, the, well, I, I should have asked the question, but can we do the new logo, because I agree with Councilmember Napolitano about the logo, on the blue, but in the shoe pattern? You know, where the sun is...
Yeah, that's what I want.
Where the sun is now.
I mean, you still want the shoe underneath?
It's not a shoe.
Well, I mean, they're calling it the shoe, but...
We can take out the shoe.
That's supposed to be a wave, you can take out that wave. It's supposed to be a wave, I believe.
It's sun, sand, and sea, right?
Yeah.
Right, so you could take out the, the sand and the sea, and just have the logo.
Right. Of the 12th Street, on the 12th Street sign.
On the 12th Street.
Can we do that? Yeah, absolutely.
And put the color logo in there?
Put the color logo in there, yep.
Love that compromise.
All right, so, okay.
It's a shape, so it's an iconic shape, but the logo is the same.
I mean, if we're going there, we can make it whatever shape we want, we can put the logo on the end of a rectangle and have a complete, like, because Santa Monica has theirs up top in the middle, a circle on top over their street signs. I mean, right, we can make it whatever shape we want.
Yeah, absolutely.
Keep the iconic. But anyway, so, so we're not deciding that today.
We don't have to decide that, but we could give direction, but I like where we're going.
Wait, but three years?
Yeah, let's wait for three years.
And then as, as far as the Phase One scope for the parking lot identification, I'm okay with that. But, but, but just to confirm, we're not going with the A05 down at the bottom there on slide four, and we're not going with the A14?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, those, those are my thoughts about it. So, if, Councilmember Montgomery, if you could just restate your motion?
Yes, my motion is to authorize the advertising of the Wayfinding Phase One Vehicle Parking and Pedestrian Sign Improvement Project.
And that's what I said.
For construction bids.
Give direction as far as you, about the logo on the...
I don't think we gave direction.
Original design? A friendly amendment?
Sure, go, make your amendment.
If we even need it. But if we can just see a mock-up of the 12th Street sign with the new... But if we can just see a mock-up of the 12th Street sign with the new logo replacing the sun, and you can do it one with the wave and one without the wave.
I like that.
Uh-oh.
Very sorry, done it.
Okay.
Can you confirm the font?
I'm sorry, but...
Can you confirm the font, please?
Well, the font on the new, right?
Yeah.
Is that what we wanted to go with, that new font? Yeah, not the 12th Street font, but the font on the two Highlands.
Spartan, Spartan MB.
Spartan.
Spartan MB.
We're going to be able to squeeze everything in with Spartan? Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Is there an alternative proposal?
Hattie's Boulevard.
Just change the letting.
Well...
I accept a friendly amendment.
So, okay, so let's vote, please.
They could always, sorry, go ahead. It's okay.
You have three years to correct it.
I got three years to correct it. I got two years.
Motion passes five zero.
I'm moving to Italy.
How about we make it for the Olympics, okay? Everything is geared to the Olympics.
Oh, so we have the Olympics logo? Oh, sorry, just kidding.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
So you're saying I got a chance?
To item number thirteen?
Yeah.
Item number thirteen, I lost my train of mind here. Item nine, the consideration of fifteen sculpture options recommended by the Cultural Arts Commission to lease, purchase, or commission. Parks and Recreation Director Lehman, this is your night.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. Alan Stewart, our cultural arts manager, would be presenting this item as well.
Good evening, everyone. So just a friendly reminder of how this item comes to us. City Council gave staff in the Cultural Arts Commission to explore, if you will, the world of sculptures and what was possible, what was available. We had a very broad spectrum of things to take a look at, so we did our best, and we would love to hear your direction on which direction you would like to further go. The first thing I wanted to go over is, before we start commissioning or purchasing or leasing things, we need to know where to put them. So here are some options of where we have in the city that we could install artworks. So on this slide, you're seeing Civic Plaza, option A. And it's a bit tough to see on this screen, but essentially what we're proposing, and we will have to, for many of these locations, we'll have to work closely with Public Works and Community Development as well to see if it's feasible to put things in there, if there's weight restrictions, things like that. But essentially, what used to be that black round fountain, which is now a planter, you could put a piece in the center of it so that the base of it is surrounded by the plants that are currently there, so that's an option. Civic Plaza, option B. You can see the arrow there. We all remember the puff of wind sculpture that stood there for quite some time, so that's the option that we're proposing. That's a spot that we're proposing. Additionally, again, in Civic Plaza, option C, that black now planter, which used to be a fountain, you could put one piece in the center, you could put three pieces, one in each one of those squares. Those are some possibilities. And then on the right side, you see that planter next to where the checkered, you know, chess checker tables are, so another planter option. Another possibility would be the lawn in front of the library. One thing to note on that, that is county-owned, so if that option were to be considered, we'd have to work with the county. And another option, which is sort of tough to tell the difference, but again, the planter with vegetation right in front of that beautiful Bow Bridges mural, so you can see where the arrow is pointing kind of farther back on that right. Walking away slightly from Civic Plaza, right next to, right in front of the pier restroom, there are three little tiny pedestals. They're about two and a half, three feet by three feet. I'm not sure exactly when or why those pedestals were installed, but something could go atop of those. Again, we'd have to work with Public Works to see what sort of a load they could bear, but they exist. Oops, I apologize, going backwards. The Commission also felt that there was plenty of room on the green belt somewhere, not necessarily identifying a precise spot, but somewhere on the green belt, a piece could be installed that would not be obstructing the view or another way obstructing the use of the space. In front of the art center, the lawn area that's there, that's kind of frequently been considered for artwork, so that's an option as well. And then there's a section right on the, so at Manhattan Heights, there's a corner where you're seeing the arrow that's not very well utilized. We actually did double-check also with the rec program to make sure that that wouldn't be in anyone's way. One thing to consider about that location is, because of the number of participants that are there, this would have to be a pretty strong piece, because it would certainly invite some interaction. And then the other locations were considered. So on the left there, you're seeing the Waterwise Parquet. That's the area off of Artesia. It's that little tiny triangle, and we did have several pieces there in the past. Most recently, that's where Dragon Tail originally was, where it had some reflection issues. And then afterwards, there was that giant flower that was there as well. So there's already a concrete pedestal that's there that can bear quite a bit of load, so it's ready-made. And another location that the Commission considered was around the water tower. There's just a lot of open grassy area, and perhaps something could be incorporated somewhere there, again, without taking away usable space. So those are some of the options that they considered. We also took briefly, and it's not in the PowerPoint on purpose, because we very briefly took a look at the location by El Porto Beach. We know that in the past, there's been quite a bit of controversy as to whether or not to put anything or rehabilitate that little square, that little section of grass there. So there's only really one artwork that we were proposing for, or the Commission recommended for that site, which is a very, very low-profile artwork that would not in any way visually impact the area, because we know that residents there are very concerned about the...
That's county property, too, right? Their approval.
No, there's a, I believe it's a city property.
A triangle?
The little triangle parquet. Okay, we will double-check, and if it's county, then we'll have to work with them.
And east of the bike path is us?
I was under the impression that it was city-owned.
It's county. We've gone, we've looked at that before, to do things through Parks and Rec.
Okay, I will double-check.
Anyway.
Okay, certainly. So if that's something that Council felt strongly about, we will absolutely do more due diligence. So the Commission worked to, really worked well together to bring forward anything that was ready-made, available, where things could be purchased, et cetera. This is an artist named Pedro Vialta. He's from New York, and he makes these seashell pieces. These particular ones are made out of rebar. If we were to commission something, they would have to be made out of stainless steel or something else that would be appropriate for a marine environment. In this case, with the pieces the way they are currently, the price would be approximately $15,000, although we did not inquire as to whether there would be a cost difference with stainless steel. And one of the options that the Commission considered for this would be, for example, on the three little plinths that are next to the pier, where, you know, one could sit on each one. I think they also considered the lawn in front of the library. Next, we have Anthony Howe. And Anthony is in Orcas Island, Washington. This piece is already created. It would not be commissioning, you would be purchasing this piece, although commission, I'm sure, is possible. This piece is $185,000. It's a rather large, tall piece. It's about 16 feet tall. It's called Disco, and the Commission was thinking of having it somewhere, either possibly on the strand or in the Civic Plaza. There were also some conversations earlier on in a process to possibly engage Poliwog Park, although we know how impacted that space is. So that's why that note about Poliwog is still up there. Next, we have an interesting piece. This came to us by way of Hamera Goldstein. As we know, Hamera's long been involved in the arts in the city of Manhattan Beach. This is a piece that she currently owns by Rico Eastman, and it is a piece that she would, she has proposed to donate to the city. So it would come with no acquisition cost. But of course, as for any of these pieces, we would have to consider the installation cost, and for all of these pieces or any that would be approved, we would follow the new model that we've adopted, kind of starting with Bruce's Beach, where we will work with other city staff, including Public Works, Community Development, Building Safety, Engineering, et cetera, to make sure that these pieces are installed appropriately. So we would have to count the amount of money, if you will, that those things, that those logistics take up, including permitting, engineering specs, et cetera. But this piece, other than those considerations, this is a donation. Next up, we have a piece by, I apologize for pronunciations, Jorge Blanco, I would assume, from, and this, he is from Florida, and he makes these sort of whimsical aluminum powder-coated pieces. The piece that the Commission was mostly drawn to was this bicyclist. In this case, he's, you can see it's kind of more tabletop size, but he could be made bigger. This artist also does commission, and their idea was to put it somewhere closer to the strand, again, possibly on one of those three pedestals or something else. At this scale, you can see that this piece is somewhere in a $40,000 to $50,000 range. We would have to explore if we wanted it in a different scale, larger, smaller. This is an artist that, who actually has artwork on view currently at the art center. Name is Brittany Ryan. Brittany is in Laguna Beach, and she specializes in figurative sculpture. So up at the top, you can see one of her pieces that's a bronze of a beachgoer, and down at the bottom, you can see a commissioned piece that she did of several slightly larger-than-life hikers for Laguna Beach. So this is not a specific piece that the Commission is proposing. This is more an artist that could be engaged to have a conversation with and see what could be created specifically for Manhattan Beach, much like the work that she did for Laguna Beach. So there's no budget at this point, because we're not sure how, you know, how big or small something would be. Next, we have Alex Weinstein. We've seen Alex's work before. He does these very serene, calm ocean pieces. Sometimes they're painted, and sometimes they're this sculpted work. And so this is the section in El Porto that Alex was thinking of, again, in terms of a very calm, peaceful spot, having one of these abstract pieces of ocean, if you will, that could, are both a sculptural piece, but you could also sit on it or, you know, even use it as a low table or something like that. And that's why we, the Commission considered this piece for that location, is because it is so low-profile that hopefully there would be less concern about it. Next, we have a piece by Jan Hoy. She is an artist from Witby Island, Washington. We have a lot of Washingtonians in this, in this selection. This piece is $25,000. It's Corton Steel, and there's, yeah, there's a few places where it could go if selected. Next, we have Jeremy Guy. This is a rather substantial-sized artwork. You can see it's almost nine feet or so. And this particular piece both is shaped as an abstract heart, and it's titled murmuration. Murmuration is a pattern in which birds fly, and it's made out of a composite granite material. The artist is able to make it out of other materials and other sizes as well. This one has, as it currently stands, is about $70,000. Next, we have Duo by David Hostedler. This is a very interesting piece. David lived in Ohio. However, he is deceased. Despite being deceased and no longer with us, his studio actually still owns the molds to his pieces. This is a bronze piece. Bronze pieces, all, some will have a molding technique, so you would not be getting a piece that was somewhere else and relocating it. You would be commissioning a new piece that comes. There's a couple of different sizes that is available from David's original molds. So the budget for that would be somewhere between $60,000 and $100,000, depending on the size and the patina. This is a piece by Aristides Demetrius. We're not, we couldn't get the artist's location for this one, and the proposal is for it to possibly be in Civic Plaza at that location where the Puff of Wind boat used to be, and it's $55,000. And I think this piece is six feet tall. Also of note, you'll see a few of these pieces, including this one right now, are shown in with water features or in some sort of a fountain-like environment. For all of our sculptures, the Commission is recommending not having a fountain or a water feature, just, we all know why, there's drought. So when you're seeing the water feature, just kind of ignore that. It's just, it's for, for, just to see the artwork, not the water. This is an artwork by David Boyadjian, and David makes these very abstract flower floral-like pieces. Commission thought it would be really interesting to have one of these, perhaps depicting a California poppy, maybe, in that California poppy orange or something along those lines. And this piece is between $10,000 to $20,000. Next, we have Lyle London. He's from Tempe, Arizona. We're not sure on the budget on this piece. It's another bronze piece. And then, then we have Archie Held. Again, this is another piece that's shown as a fountain. We would not have it as a fountain. It's about 12 feet tall or so. And again, not sure where this artist was from. I believe the Commissioner was thinking of this piece also in the Civic Plaza somewhere. We have Shane Dark, and Shane is another working, well-recognized artist, and he creates these kind of abstract pieces that are reminiscent of nature or coral or trees or something to that effect. This piece is $100,000, and it's about 11 feet tall or so. And there's other pieces that could be commissioned as well from Shane, if that's something that we're interested in. And then last but not least, this one is maybe being brought to you slightly prematurely, but we did want you to see it. This is an artist from Holland, so I know we're going a little bit far away, but this artist actually travels all over the world, and what she does is she creates what she calls the lace fence. So she has a manufacturer that she works with that's able to weave chain-link fence into these just really fantastic shapes. So what she does is she typically travels to different places. She's done one of these in Australia, and this one's not in Australia. This one's, I think, in New York somewhere. And so she'll, the one, for the one in Australia, it was really interesting. She worked with local children and asked them to draw pictures of their local flora and fauna. Then she took those pictures. She actually translated them into traditional lace-making weave techniques, and then her factory that she works with weaves them as you would weave thread and lace. So really, really very interesting way of working, and this artist is very used to working internationally. That's why we considered an artist from so far away. And as you can probably imagine, we would be suggesting this for Sand Dune. We know in the past, City Council has been interested in creating a more, you know, artistic, more beautiful fence for Sand Dune Park when that is ready for it, when that is redone. So this is something that could be considered for that location. Of course, it could be considered for any other location as well. That is all we have for you tonight. We would love your direction on how you would like for the Commission to proceed.
All right. Questions? Mayor Protem Horwath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I think, three specific questions. I would like to comment, though, before we begin, that this is a really great, this is, in the years that I've looked at all of this, this is really such a terrific selection. So kudos to you, Alan, and kudos to the Commission. This is very exciting. All right, my first question would be with the Rico Eastman piece. And I understand it, you know, Hamera, you know, is willing to donate it, and obviously we'd have to take into consideration the cost of installation. I'm wondering, is there, this one, you know, I try not to get too hung up on this, and we have a risk management department, but it looks very, a little sharp-edged. I guess the question is, let's say we all fall in love with some of these pieces, do we run these through risk management? Do they, so that happens?
We will, we will ask risk management and see if they have any huge concerns with these. But that said, some artworks are climbable. It's understood that one is not supposed to climb the artwork, so... So I think that becomes kind of a mitigating factor for liability issues, but we will absolutely double-check for the risk management.
Okay. Question number two, and, and one of our residents asked this question, too. So some of these are for purchase, and especially where the artist is deceased, I can imagine they're probably not, we probably can't lease them, right?
Correct, yes.
But are some of them that say they're for purchase able to be leased?
Potentially. We didn't, we did not reach out to every artist with those questions, just not to get the process going.
Yeah, yeah.
If that, but potentially. If, if an artwork is already created, then potentially.
Right. And just two more quick questions. I mean, are you, are, is there a limit? I mean, money is money, but are, is there some number that you're trying to get to? Okay. And then the last question I have, on the location slide that showed Civic Plaza E, Civic Plaza F. I, I'm just going to say that that tree, those trees that are on that, that lawn of the library, I, I actually thought they were sculptures at first. When you look at the shadow, so, A, interesting, but B, I hope that those aren't in danger of, they, they don't look well. And I don't know if it's something we have to ask. Well, it's winter, but I, I, yeah, and, yeah, but let's talk to risk management in the county about that, too. Just, just saying. All right, thank you.
Check with our, with our arborist.
All right, yeah, we have an arborist. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lester.
Ailen, what is the current balance of our Public Arts Trust Fund?
There's about one point six million dollars in the Public Art Trust Fund, and roughly five hundred and seventy thousand of that has not been allocated.
So that's what I was confirming. So the amount that we have to work for, because you answered Mayor Protem Haworth's question, the amount that we have to work with is up to, including potential projects such as Bruce's Beach.
Well, the Bruce's Beach has already been allocated.
Already been allocated. But we have up to, can you repeat that number one more time?
Roughly five hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay. And the question was already asked. Even though the direction was to look at purchasing pieces, because there was an indication from staff that it was difficult to find pieces that were available only for lease, in fact, there might be some flexibility here to lease pieces. Is that right?
There could be, yes. We will look into it, it, once we get clearer direction on which specific pieces to approach.
Okay. In addition to further assessing some of these pieces for safety, as was indicated, because kids have a way of climbing on these sculptures, I wanted to also confirm whether weather was a consideration, because I just wonder how some of these pieces are going to hold up if they were placed proximate to the strand with the, with the sun, with the moisture from the air and other things.
Absolutely. And so that's why on some of these, for example, on the, on the seashells that originally are, or typically the artist makes them from rebar, I would not recommend getting those in rebar because they would constantly be rusting and they would eventually disintegrate. So if you were interested in, for example, the seashells, we would have to commission the artist to make them out of stainless steel or some other material that would be more durable. On most of the rest of the pieces, they are already out of, from a material that's more resilient. So it's either stainless or bronze.
Okay. Finally, with regard to location, I was wondering if view was taken into account. I can recall a prior council came up with the grand idea of spreading art around the community, including on our Veterans Parkway. And of course, we heard from residents that were not too thrilled. So with regard to the height of some of these pieces, I'm just wondering if interference with views were taken into account, because I just heard some recommendation of some locations that might well engender a less-than-loving appreciation by some residents who have views presently.
Absolutely. We, we, the commission did both. We both, I encouraged them to think about the views, but there were a few instances in which they felt that the piece was strong enough to where maybe, maybe we can consider it despite the, the fact that it's maybe a little taller and, and possibly, you know, is this a piece we want to take a risk on or, or something to that effect?
Thank you.
So, but that's also why, for example, for that El Porto little parquet, we're only proposing such low-profile pieces, because we know there for sure the view was a huge discussion.
Thank you.
So colleagues, I, I wanted to make a suggestion. Due to the extensiveness of this agenda item, considering fifteen pieces, locations, everything like that, and we're facing two lengthy agenda items, is perhaps, could we just get a, a form, an evaluation form or a selection sheet that could help us organize all this information and then give us homework so we can go back and then bring it back on another day? Or do you feel like we can?
I'm ready to go.
You're ready to go.
I'm, I'm open to whichever. I'm open to your idea. I'm open to proceeding, so.
I just didn't know how.
So I would propose, I, I'm receptive to your proposal, but let's first hear if there's any public comment, and then hear what our colleagues might have to say, offer, and then we can make that choice.
Okay, okay. That sounds good. Great. Okay, we'll open it up to, well, actually, I, I have a question. I also saw on the Goldstein piece, the sharp edges there. If, if it, the Alex Weinstein piece on slide number thirteen, if it is on county land, can we explore them paying for it?
I suppose we could.
And the other thing, too, there's an awful lot of things that are made in bronze. Bronze is very popular for the wrong reasons. So we might want to get some feedback on alternate materials, if that's available.
Bronze is a very durable material that lends itself well to this climate, and this is a difficult climate for outdoor structures. So, you know, when anchored appropriately, and with some of these pieces weighing, you know, in, in the tons, one would have to work quite a bit harder to, to obtain it for their own use.
Okay. Well, I mean, we saw the Jackie Robinson statue, like sawed off at the ankles and carted off, so. Okay, and I think that's, I, I, the, the lace fence, a lot of fence rust, you know, a lot of fences rust. Did you discuss with the artists, like, how to prevent rust?
We did not. We, we didn't reach out to every single artist, again, not knowing what council would be interested in. We can and absolutely will reach out to them if that's something that council is interested in pursuing it. However, it is made by the same manufacturer that manufactures regular chain link fences. So that same material that is made for outdoor, you know, permanent or long-term use is what this, is what is used here.
It's usually galvanized.
So, yeah, I believe it's galvanized steel.
Yeah, I think part of the, the whole decision-making is artist saying how long it can last.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you. So let's open it up for public comment. Please, anybody here have any questions?
First of all, after serving on the hometown fair for eight years and running Kid Country, I would be cautious where on, you know, the, the green belt you place things, because that would interfere with the fair. And it's also, I've noticed things that were placed there, it makes it harder for people to lay out Kid Country and all that. So just along those lines. The other thing I've noticed is over at Live Oak Park, where the memorial is for the police officer, and it's got the helmet there, I've seen people put trash in the helmet. And just like, so if you do the shelves, just think of all the stuff people are going to throw in it. I would refer to the police of all the stupid things they've seen, and the stupid things that people do. Or if you look at, what was it, Sixth Street Bridge, where all the people are climbing all over it, think of how people are going to do things, you know, are they going to do selfies in front of them? Is that going to cause a dangerous situation? But just try and think of the stupidity of what people do in picking locations and the items that you put up there. So don't cause any problems.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Counsel, Gary McCauley. I trust you've had a chance to read my lengthy email. But I just want to, so rather than rehash all the things that I've written to you previously, I just want to emphasize, I, I understand that when people look at an art piece, they bring their own interpretation to it. And oftentimes, one really doesn't know what the artist had in mind. But in the example, in this particular example, the, the Duo sculpture by David Hostetler, we know what that sculpture was made for. And it was made specifically, it was commissioned to honor a fellow named Dan Galbreth, who was a real estate developer in Ohio and a partner with Donald Trump and his hotel and tower. The, the piece was commissioned by an architect, Philip Johnson, by Donald Trump and by Dan Galbreth's daughter, Lizanne Galbreth, to honor Don Galbreth, the real estate developer. That's the story of this piece. And now, I just don't see the connection to Manhattan Beach out of that. Now, you may bring your own interpretation to looking at the piece, but on top of everything else, and now I know that it's not going to be moved from New, from New York, where it's currently next to the Trump Tower, it's actually a piece that is manufactured at request. It's, it's one of a series. There's a lot of these things around. In fact, online, I found out that you can get your own, I don't know, sixteen-inch desktop model of it. So I, I just don't see why we would want this piece. This is not a jewel for Manhattan Beach. This is just a, a random piece of art dedicated to somebody else. Thank you.
Anybody else in chambers?
I'd love to speak.
She's a commissioner?
She's on the commission.
Oh, yeah.
No, we don't.
Yeah, I, I don't think so. Can, can someone on the Cultural Arts Commission speak?
It's your call.
No. No.
No? Okay.
It's not our practice.
They had their shot at the, when they met.
Right, yeah, yeah. Sorry.
For members of the public who might be listening, the question is whether a member of a commission that made the recommendations that are before council can speak to council. And I think we have a handbook for commissioners that says no, and the reason is that they have an opportunity to speak in the commission, at the commission, as part of the recommendation, if I understand that correctly.
Okay. Thank you. Online, Zoom?
Hi. Admittedly, I did not actually get to see every single piece presented tonight, but I think something that comes to mind is the sculpture that we have at Pollywog or the Betlocks. You know, those things are, are kid-friendly. And I don't know if the intention was to actually climb on these pieces, but you can, kids do, and it's not that big of a deal. I do worry about the other ones that I saw, some of them had, you know, very sharp edges. Are we going to put like a, a thing around it so that people don't actually go up to it and, you know, touch it, climb it, whatever? So I think we have to be really careful about, you know, what kind of sculpture art we put up here in Manhattan Beach. And, you know, sometimes people ruin it for other people. It's why we can't have nice things and can't just trust that, you know, this artwork will be treated with respect. So just be careful of that when you're deciding. But, you know, I, my comment still stands from the other art stuff that we've discussed tonight. You know, it feels like visually overwhelming with, like clutter. There is a, there is a point, there's a fine line between, you know, beautiful artwork that can enhance a place and then too much of a good thing, you know? So you gotta kind of have to walk that line. And I think just because we have money doesn't mean we should spend it all. So that's my opinion on this, on this sculpture part of the art. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Heather.
There's no additional requests.
Closing public comments. Councilmember Napolitan.
Thank you, Your Honor. And just to want to take a moment to recognize Ailen Stewart here, our artist manager. This will be her last meeting, we understand, so it is not an easy job. You have to deal with us and a whole lot of other people.
True.
You've done a great job these last several years, and so I just want to give you recognition and appreciation for all that you've done here in Manhattan Beach, and wish you best with your endeavors going forward. That said, I'm going to go kind of in reverse here. I'm, I think the, the locations can be chosen, frankly, after the art pieces are chosen. So I'm going to defer on the art pieces, or the location, rather, with the caveat that I don't really like the Civic Center. I think things are just get hidden and lost in the Civic Center. I'd rather push this out in other parts of the community and not, you know, spread it apart, not clustered in one area. Everything seems to get put into the Civic Center. We've got, we've had art there plenty of times before. We've got the Peace Pole, we've got other things there. So turning to the art itself, you know, I appreciate the, the choices here that have been brought before us. They said it couldn't be done. The commission, they did a great job, commission, in bringing forward a number of different pieces here. Doesn't mean I have to agree with all of them, and I don't. So I'm going to skip over the clam shells. I'm, I'm not looking at that one. The Anthony Howe piece.
Anthony, sorry.
Well, not for the other there. Anthony Howe, it's just, you know, I'm not going to put that much into one piece. So, nice piece, could go somewhere, but a hundred and eighty-five thousand, I see other things that I'd rather put before that. I appreciate the Rico Eastman piece. I understand the sharp edges thing. I mean, I guess we should put warnings on knives that they're sharp, but, you know, where we put this, I think location will help keep this out of harm's way. I like this piece. I would, I would go forward on this piece. The Jorge Blanco piece, I like that. Or, and I, I say I like that because I was also, as Ailen said, that it could be this or one of his other variations.
Yep.
But as an art, you know, as a theme of art here, I appreciate Jorge Blanco. I would go with that. Brittany Ryan, same thing. I think there is a place in Manhattan Beach. You see in a lot of different communities, a life sculpture, sitting on a bench, standing somewhere. I think that would be good here. Mr. Weinstein's piece, doesn't do it for me. I'm going to skip that one. Jan Hoi, I like this piece. I think it does evoke a wave. I think we could find a place for that. So I like that. Jeremy Guy piece, I like that. The, to Mr. McCauley's point, David Hostetler, my understanding of this was that there are other ones. I mean, to me, these two look like they ate something they didn't like, but they, they, that said, well, it's a well-known artist, okay? That's a joke. Put that aside, though, the, I think the point was that there are other pieces that we could choose from. Now, whether we do that, I'm interested in seeing them. I'm not interested in this piece going forward. Not interested in the Demetrius. I like the David Boyadjian, Boyadjian piece. I think, and the price is right, but I think that, you know, we're not just buying art for price, but again, this is something whimsical. I could see this in, easily in one of our parks or other green space. Same thing, Lyle London, but I think I'd go with the other first. So not interested in the Archie Held. Shane Dark, yeah, but I worry about that one in terms of if there's any graffiti, how we're going to clean that up. The lace fence, that's something I really, you know, given all the caveats of weather and durability, but if we could do that, do it over in the center, that is something that I think we could do. In a lot of our parks, in a lot of our spaces, for these fences that we have now, which are ugly, can be beautified through this. So those are my choices. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, Amy Haworth, you're up.
Okay, and I'm just, I'm, I agree with you that let's, let's look at the art that we're interested in first. And I hope someone's keeping track of this. I'm trying to.
I am.
Yeah, I'm trying to. The lace fence.
Well, you're going backwards.
I am, because that's how the papers ended up.
Number seven? You can't go to slide seven, but that's okay? I mean, okay.
Sorry, folks.
I will accommodate you.
Thank you so much. So, but I, and I really, I heard an emphasis from you, Steve, that that's something you're really interested in, and I am too. I think that's really incredible. I like the David Boyajian piece, too. Oh, I like the Shane Dark. I really love that. It's expensive, though. It is, it looks like it might be a little bit fragile, but I would, I would say for me, that would be a tier-two, or, you know, want, but lace fence is a number one for me. Okay, so, go to, back to the next, okay. I'm not interested in Archie Held. Gary?
Are you?
I'm looking, so I like Lyle London, I liked.
Okay.
But maybe that was number two for me. Keep going. I'm following. Now, they're going backwards.
No, 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 no. I just wanna, I'm trying to keep it just like number-one choices.
Okay. David Boyajian, I liked a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be a number one. Ah, it's okay. You know, Demetrius, nah. Okay.
Okay.
So, I appreciate what Steve was saying, if we could find another piece. I mean, he's not just from Ohio, he's from Athens, Ohio. So, I'd be interested in looking at.
Oh, my goodness, sorry.
Super important. But he is a well-known artist. I appreciate the resident who spoke, but, so I would be interested in looking, but it's not my top. Keep going.
So, should I code it?
I mean, I'm giving it, like, it's my number two. I've got ones and twos.
Okay.
Okay.
You keep track of your twos.
Okay. I love Jeremy Guy. I love the murmuration, the harp. It's very Paloma Picasso. Okay? Going? I like this a lot.
Can you say the name, though?
I'm sorry. Jan Hoi.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not that interested in the Alex Weinstein. I appreciate what he's trying to do or she's trying to do, but I don't love it so much. So, Brittany Ryan, people tend to like these kinds of figurative works, and they're very well-done. So, I would be interested in pursuing a Brittany Ryan. That'd be number one. Jorge Blanco, like Steve said, maybe, although bicycle's interesting, so yes, that's a number one for me. Rico, I'd be interested. Number two for me. I loved this, but it is expensive. It takes up everything.
Name?
I'm sorry. I'm looking right, I'm.
Just so I know what you're talking about.
No, no, you're, that's fair. Anthony Howe.
Okay, yeah, Anthony Howe.
But I don't think it's, I love it, but I think we can do more with the other pieces. So, it's not for me. And I'll give, I like the clam shells of Pedro Vialta, and I think they'd be great down there by the strand, and I think they'd be very fun. So, I sort of love those. So, we, that's where we part there, Steve. I love those. That's a number one for me.
Pedro's a one.
Pedro's a one.
Okay.
And I'll keep, I'll write down my ones.
Who is next?
He left the building.
He left the building. In full disclosure, I've had a little, I have a little bit of jet lag. I'm seven hours ahead. I'm happy with the choices. Mr. Mayor, you earlier suggested that we have this come back with some chart where we can order them. I think for members of the public, I would say that we're not planning to do all of these pieces. The idea was to solicit proposals, and the commission did its job presenting pieces to us, and staff did its job in indicating potential locations. I'd welcome another crack at this with perhaps including the items that have been mentioned by at least my two colleagues, and perhaps you have some others to add, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. That's understandable. I'll go ahead and go through, and then we'll have our colleague, Councilmember Montgomery, go through it as well. All right, starting with Pedro Vialta, that's a no. Anthony Howe, that's a no. Rico Eastman, I want to honor, yeah, well, we'll go with Rico Eastman. I just see cut knees and stuff, hopefully. I'm not enamored with Jorge Blanco, to me.
Mayor Franklin, on Rico Eastman, what was your, what were your thoughts on Rico Eastman?
Yes.
Yes.
Jorge Blanco, no. Brittany Ryan, I hope she's not listening, but I see this all over the place, all over the world. It's overdone, I think.
Okay.
You know, and then just to, I just see problems with it, not just theft, but also vandalism and things like that.
I think it's a good point that you brought up about the bronze, and that's a great point.
Alex Weinstein, no. Jan Hoi, to me, this looks like it's what we have already in Polywog Park, so that's a no for me. The red circle or something. Jeremy Guy, you know, I put a comment here because they said it was a flock of birds twisting and circling, but we don't have birds here that do that. I mean, we have seagulls, and they just kind of like go around, but, but they're, not that I've seen, I am out and about a lot, but I, but I see these on the nature show, and it's pretty cool, but we don't have those breeds of birds, it appears.
Look, it looks like a heart. Come on.
A heart, again, that's kind of derivative, and anyway, not for me.
What's the problem against love?
Oh, now I have things against love.
Keep going.
I love my wife, whose birthday it is today.
Happy birthday.
But, sorry, Nancy.
You're busy dealing with the weighty issues of city business.
Go ahead and eat the cake without me. David Hostetler, no. Aristides Demetrius, that's gonna be a great ladder for the kids. No. I do like David Boyajian. That I like. So, I just think some, did it mention Commissioner Poppy? Yeah, California Poppy in Orange. That would be nice. I'm a little concerned about the kids climbing it as well. Does anybody on Lyle London, do you see a bird on the top that looks like a pelican?
Sure.
I see a person taking a bow or a curtsey.
Yeah, 'cause it says ocean theme.
Oh.
And I love the pelicans, as I've mentioned before, even though I don't like them painted on the bathroom wall, but, but I'm trying to decide if.
The title of the artwork is Ocean Dancer.
Is ocean?
Ocean Dancer. It is meant to be a human.
Ocean dancer. Oh, so it's dancer. No. Archie Held, no. Shane Dark, no. Lace Fence, yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think you just chose three of the group.
Yeah, three of the group.
Were you for the fence?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Love the fence. So, for me, it's, just to recap, it's Rico, it's David Boyajian, and the Lace Fence.
One with murmuration.
And we were, while you were out, Councilmember Montgomery, we were talking about, because David Lesser is suffering from jet lag, that maybe you go ahead and make your picks if they're quick, and then we will come back as a homework assignment and bring back our choices of, he could then add in his choices, and then we can decide on locations.
You guys, the speakers in the back do work.
Oh, okay.
I can hear what you said. But thank you for the recap. All right, mine just quick. Pedro Vialta, start with him first. That's a no.
Wait, sorry.
Going in the order, the order of the presentation. No reverse order, nothing. I'll write down the rulebook. Pedro Vialta's a no. Anthony Howe, no, too expensive. I do accept the Rico Eastman donation, kind donation from Mayor Golton, that's fantastic. Whatever the cost, I'd install it, shouldn't be a secondary thought. So, yes on Rico Eastman. Yes on Jorge Blanco, I think it's whimsical. Brittany Ryan, I think I see, like you said, I think too much of her art I see, which is good for her, but not good for us. So, no on Brittany Ryan. No on Alex Weinstein. Yes on Jan Hoi, I like that. I like Jeremy Guy. David Hostetler, again, suffers the Ryan concept, too much of the same artwork, so no on David Hostetler. Not about politics, Gary, I don't like repetitive art anywhere in the world, so no on David Hostetler. Aristides Demetrius, of course, another fellow Greek guy, I like that one. Regardless of the pointed edges, folks, we can find things in the city that are pointed. Somebody remember the Red Dog in Met Locks with the sharp edge on the paw? Seriously? We can't, we can't cover everything. You can round it off best you can, but you cannot make everything safety compliant on every single issue. They can round it off best they can, but we're not gonna worry about that one. That's a yes.
So, Aristides?
Aristides, a yes. Yes on Boyajian, David Boyajian. Yes on Lyle London. Yes, Archie Held. No on Shane Dark. On Lyle London, you talked about the pelican, it was called Ocean.
Dancer.
Ocean Dancer?
Correct.
I didn't see pelican in there or birds, with all due respect, Alfred Hitchcock. I didn't see that in the same.
It burned.
But yes on Lyle London, yes on Archie Held, no on Shane Dark, yes for sure on the Lace Fence because it's created and one of a kind.
Nothing brings out the snark on council like art.
I'm sorry, and Lace Fence?
Yes on Lace Fence because it's one of a kind.
Probably a big yes on the Lace Fence.
Okay.
Yeah, we all are, yeah.
So, that gives four of our votes. And do we need to make a motion? I mean.
Would you like me to review where you stand with majority?
We're gonna bring it back.
Yeah.
Bring it back for David, and then also the rest, all of us, then location.
I think just direction, right? We don't need a motion.
Yeah, no motion, 'cause it's coming back. It's gonna have a list.
Yeah, you have a list, and, and, 'cause I would also like to go back through, like, you know, maybe we could even score it like one through six or whatever, you know, like whatever we want, but bring back, you know, in one, on a one-page form so we can grade it that way. I think that'd be great.
Did you also keep track, or you?
I did. So, would you like to then eliminate the artworks from that score sheet that it seems like the majority is not interested in, or would you like to see everything come back?
Well, why don't you put them on the bottom with no votes?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll kind of put them in order of interest.
Yeah.
Okay. We can do that.
Okay. Sounds good. So, number thirty, thank you, colleagues. Item number fourteen, consideration of library commission recommendations, including work plan updates and potential uses of Los Angeles County Library set-aside funds. Director, Parks Recreation Director Lehman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Melissa McCollum, our senior recreation manager, will be presenting this item.
Okay.
Stand up for a second. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. When I saw the location of this item on the agenda, I knew that I would need to keep this pretty short, so there is more detail in the staff report, and I'm happy to expand on any of the areas that you're interested in, but I'll stick to the main points now. Standing up and attention. Okay. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. There we go, there we go. So, the library commission and staff are looking for your direction tonight, specifically on the recommended city council work plan updates, as well as a request to use $46,000 of library surplus funding to support expanded programming at the Manhattan Beach Library. And as a reminder for the community, library surplus funds accumulate for the benefit of the Manhattan Beach Library and the community as property taxes paid into the system by Manhattan Beach residents exceed the cost of operating the branch. And currently, there's an accumulated surplus balance of $11 million. So, on to the recommendations. The library commission would like to keep two items on the current work plan, Story Walk and Library Appreciation Events. Both items may be supported with $2,250 included in next year's Parks and Recreation Department budget. That's the same level of funding as this year. The library commission would like to add use of the library surplus to the work plan and make related recommendations moving forward. They'd like to support a new one-book, one-county community reading program using library surplus funds beginning this year. The new program would debut in the spring, and it features multiple library jurisdictions, including LA County Library, the Los Angeles Public Library, and everybody would read and discuss the book LA Weather by Maria Amparo Escondon, as well as have several author and other special events planned throughout LA County. So, the cost of enhanced Manhattan Beach participate, participation, which would include a special kickoff with the author in Manhattan Beach, as well as the purchase of additional print and digital books to help increase participation, would be $8,500, as identified by LA County Library. The library commission would also like to use library surplus funds to implement a quarterly speaker music series at the Manhattan Beach Library that would be organized and staffed and promoted by LA County Library with advisory input from the library commission. This is a return to the model that's been used in the past of allocating library surplus funds for expanded LA County programming at the Manhattan Beach Library. The library commission and staff really believe that the strategy is better aligned to the library commission mission, and it would conserve valuable general fund as well as Department of Parks and Recreation resources. So, implementation of the quarterly speaker music series would cost $37,500 for the first year, according to LA County Library. City of Malibu has been using some of their surplus funds in this way or in a similar way since 2013. So, again, moving forward with both initiatives, the one-book, one-county program and the quarterly speaker music series would require use of library surplus, funding in the amount of not to exceed $46,000. Related to your past direction, the library commission also supports use of library surplus to improve the care and the management of the historical collection. So, thank you for your earlier action tonight, which approved the next phase of that work, which is digitization. The library commission also supports the use of the library surplus to conduct a cultural library feasibility study in partnership with LA County Library, including the exploration of the Community Maker Lab. And as mentioned in the staff report, staff will return to city council with details regarding project scope and timeline and the cost of the study after additional discussions with LA County Library, the city council liaison, and the library commission. The library commission also recommends the removal of several work plan items to better align their activities with their mission, which is on that slide. Established by resolution, library commission serves in advisory capacity to the city council regarding library services provided by the Los Angeles County Library System to the citizens of Manhattan Beach. Also, the commission acts as a liaison between the city and public-private community groups supportive of library services. So, keeping that in mind, they would like to remove these items from the work plan, the learning at the library, the Manhattan Beach Poetry Event, the entertainment series, the photo op event, the book giveaway, and the library awareness program. Author talks, which are a key component of learning at the library, will continue to be offered at the Manhattan Beach Library and will be facilitated by library staff. The photo op event will continue as part of future library events if desired by LA County Library, but it would no longer be a standalone event hosted by the library commission. This year, the photo op will be part of the Manhattan Beach Library's kickoff for the summer reading program on June 1st. So, the library commission approved these 2024 work plan recommendations at meetings on November 13th, 2023, and January 8th, 2024. All of these recommendations were approved unanimously with one exception. The vote to absorb the photo op into another event was approved 5-1 by the library commission. So, in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council discuss and provide direction tonight regarding the 2024 work plan updates, as well as the use of the not-to-exceed $46,000 from the library surplus funds for the one-book, one-county community read, and the Manhattan Beach Library speaker music series. I hope that wasn't too fast, but that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Questions, colleagues? Councilmember Napolitano.
You know what else?
Okay. Anybody else? I just have one question. I needed to have it defined, but can you please define on slide number three, the Maker Lab?
Sure, sure. So, that is an idea of a space where people gather to create and event things, and it's often filled with all sorts of things. 3D printers and software, there can be tools, there can be craft supplies, and it's just a way, it's kind of similar to the programs that they had in the elementary schools, but in the elementary schools, but at a much higher level and for all ages.
Okay, all right, great. I think that's.
Woodshop between 24.
Right, yeah.
And you see them at libraries. I mean, it's common now.
It is. There's, there's maker mobiles within the LA County Library System, but there's a very large Community Maker Lab at the downtown library that's part of the Los Angeles Public Library and then all across the country as well.
And then on page five, where you talk about the removal, number three, the entertainment series. What was the thinking behind that? Removing that?
So the idea is instead of having it be a, a library commission driven event where they do, do the planning and then also it does, it does take Parks and Rec resources also. The staff liaisons for the library commission, it is our senior recreation supervisor in charge of older adults and transportation. And so that, that support for the library commission and any, any programs that they are doing comes from, from that division. And as you know, Jocelyn Center is, is full of activities also. So the idea is, you know, we, we really do pay LA County Library to provide library services at the Manhattan Beach Library to the tune of $4 million a year. And part of that is also providing programming for all ages. So kids and, and teens and adults and, and older adults. And so the, the commission's interested in more programming for, for adults. But this would be a way to have the, the library provide that programming using library surplus money as well as professional library staff to, to execute, execute a very similar vision to what, what the commission was trying to do themselves.
Because it was relatively successful, right?
It was, it was, but, but the library also has, has lots of music events and are willing to do more, you know, again, with that extra funding that, that could be provided, could be provided in this way.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Lesser?
Melissa, can you elaborate a little further on the cultural library feasibility study that summarized on page three of the staff report that's on page 349 of the council packet? Explain a little bit more of the concept and how broad it could be beyond just the maker space.
Sure, and this was something that we talked about in, in some level at, at the October City Council meeting where council did provide, provide direction to move forward with exploring that idea in part with, with councilmember Napolitanos being a liaison with, with LA County Library and with staff. To try to answer your, your question, the idea of a cultural library would, would be to provide some basic library services, but it would also serve potentially as a place to, to store safely the historical collection as well as make it much more accessible, both in terms of displays and in terms of, of providing access to the digitized collection, additional, you know, staff support and volunteer support to make, make that collection more available. There could be, you know, there could be public art as part of that, there could be this community maker space. So the idea is to kind of explore those ideas, reach out to the community and see, see what the community is most interested in and then decide if, if that is an idea that, that we should move forward with. Does that answer your question or?
It sort of does.
Okay.
I mean, this is, I think, something we, we need. But it is a chicken and egg problem. Where is it going to be? How big does it need to be to capture the desires of the community and more importantly, our needs? As you just indicated, it includes storage. So I'm just wondering, how does this scope of this feasibility study proceed? Given that there's these fundamental questions of where it might be unless that's part of the purpose of this study?
That's exactly this purpose and also why, why we would come back with that part of the item to talk about the, the project scope and the timeline and the cost of that study. More conversations need to happen with LA County Library. They're, they're very open to this idea and to working with, with the city. But we even need to talk about what the, the scope of that feasibility study would, would look like.
How quickly could we get going on this? You indicated a number of conversations are needed, but at a certain point, our surplus continues to grow. And I think this is pretty imperative. So how quickly could staff return if there's council consensus on this item?
I'm going to potentially check in with you, City Manager. And, and the part of that is because of the, the possibilities of different locations.
Yes, and we have discussed several different locations. We've been talking with Beach Cities Health District about Adventure Plex as a possibility of converting some of that space. Of course, Marine Avenue Park is, is right there as well. And even the existing Art Center location, which used to be the library, could be considered. So it'll take several months to do the feasibility study, but we can come back to you with that this year.
Last question colleagues, thank you for your patience. Does this need to go out to bid though for a proposal? I'm just trying to see what we need to do to accelerate this process, which I think will help our community in moving forward with this growing surplus and this desire for some additional facility, but the question of where?
We're not even close to that.
We're not even close to that. Thank you.
And it would be accelerated with LA County Library.
Councilmember, Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes, quickly. So what is the difference between the items they want to remove in terms of entertainment series versus the speaker music series support above?
So again, instead of the library commission executing the entertainment series, which is what the model is now.
We're just gonna.
It would be the, the library doing it. But with, you know, the, the library commission could provide input on that, but it would be executed by library staff instead of, instead of library commission and city staff.
One question, Your Honor.
Yes, Councilmember Montgomery.
All those senior recreation manager McCollum did come from the library, it's a library question I have for you. City Manager Mo, can you confirm to everyone watching at home, waited on bated breath that the Polly Walk Park is not a consideration for location for the library?
That's correct.
I'm sure we've heard that.
Longer being considered.
That's it.
That's where the Olympic pool is going. Okay, do we?
Well, the shark mural could go there, right?
So, um, public, all right, public comment? Did I go with you in Portugal? Any comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, how about by Zoom?
There's no request.
Okay, closing public comments. Comments, council or vote?
Yeah, Your Honor. I'll jump in. I appreciate this. I think, you know, one thing clear I want to make as we go forward is that, you know, these are City of Manhattan Beach sponsored events. They're not commission sponsored, they're City of Manhattan Beach sponsored events. That said, you know, I, I do question Story Walk. When people talk about clutter, there's lots of them out there. I, I never see anyone reading them personally. I, you know, hope they do, but I don't know that that's something that's been, anyone's running back and being, saying this. Now, it costs, I don't know what it costs, it was $2,500 or something like that, right? And then the rest of these things together, I think, are around $46,000. We have an $11 million surplus. Frankly, I would send this back to the commission and tell them to think bigger. I don't think we're doing enough for, there's a lot geared towards adults. We have one of the biggest story times for kids in the county system. I think we need to do more for kids. I don't, you know, we need a coding event, more maker events, kid book reading event, buying the kids books, talking to the school districts, seeing if we can support them in any way, shape or form with this money in terms of providing books for them to read or a, or a reading thing throughout Manhattan Beach schools that everybody reads, whatever it is. This is little piddly stuff on the side. I like it, but we have $11 million surplus that the county at some point is going to say, no, you can't keep it anymore. This is just a side agreement we have with the county. There's no law that says they have to keep it for us for forever. In fact, there's a sunset already. Can't remember what it is, but it's. Yeah, 30 or 20, 30, 20, 40. But at some point, they're going to say, you know, you're going to generate this money. We're going to spread it through the whole system. Again, not a bad thing, but these aren't big enough, forward-thinking enough things for me when you have $11 million surplus. I think they should think bigger. Whatever limits are on this money, work it out, but do more, involve the kids more. You know, you want to bring bigger speakers, bring bigger speakers. We have a speakers event that goes on, a speaker series that goes on over at Redondo Beach Auditorium over there. With the money we have, we could have that whole series here in Manhattan Beach at the library if we wanted to. Think bigger. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly appreciate those comments. I, I was going to say yes and, I mean, I, I think we, you know, I've made a motion to accept their recommendations because, and I was going to say that I think this library commission is actually really kind of focused and doing, you know, trying to do a little more forward things than before. And especially with the, I think it's like cultural library feasibility study. And the city historical collection, that's, that's not included in that, the money. I mean, the $46,000, I mean, that's definitely, you know, still a significant cost. So I, so I think this, this particular commission is presenting something to us that is exciting to me. I love the one book, or is it one read, one, one book, one county. I think that's a very exciting, dynamic program. So I'm going to support this, their support wholeheartedly, 100% their recommendations. And I think they would love it. I think they, you know, talking about a speaker series, I mean, I know that they would love to get some really great authors here. And there's someone on the commission that has a direct connection to, you know, Pulitzer Prize winning authors. So I'm sure they'd love to follow that charge, but for the time being, I say, let's accept these and say, do some more. That's my motion. Accept this and do some more.
Okay, Councilmember Lesser?
I'm supportive of the motion. I'm also supportive of Councilmember Napolitanos' comments. I want to give staff and the commission clear direction to think bigger. We have funds here, we have opportunities here. One of the reasons I was asking like I was about, questions like I was about the cultural library feasibility study is we have this opportunity. And as has been indicated, this opportunity is not indefinite, particularly as our surplus grows. So I, I thank all those that are involved, but I want to think bigger and act with a little more urgency. I was one who questioned what the role of our city library commission could be once we built the new library, particularly because our agreement, our MOU runs between the county and our city manager. But the fact of the matter is there is a role for it to reflect our community and come up with direction and system with what we've just been discussing. So let's get going and let's move forward with this initial set of revisions to the work plan and come up with more.
Great, thank you. And I too am going to support this. Well, let's, let's think big and I'm just sitting here thinking about the irony about what I'm going to say is let's rebuild the art center and, at Manhattan Heights and include library services in there, library books. And then you can have a couple of, you can have a second story and that could also be used by cultural arts. We can have exhibits. I mean, the maker setup would just seem to be great there. I mean, it, it's set up nicely for, for workshops in the back. I remember the aforementioned Macy when my granddaughter, when she was four, I enrolled her in an art, you know, class there and it was just absolutely terrific. So that's something that could, we could get rid of the freeze, you know, so. So you would be happy?
Sold.
Councilmember Napolitano? We could, you know, this is a new age. I mean, when we decommissioned that, that library there, I mean, that was how many years ago? I mean, look what we have now. Look at the sources of information. Look at the consumption of that information. Look at the tools you need to consume that information. And that can all be brought back into that area and bring a lot of life. Also, it can provide another venue for anything you decide to do at the main library. We could go ahead and, you know, have this, you know, have it also at the, at the East Side Library. So something like that I would recommend. So we have a motion to accept by Councilmember Hoerth. And it's seconded by Councilmember Montgomery. I'm sorry, Mayor Potem, Hoerth and, and here's your voting screen.
Motion passes 5-0.
So number, so on to number 15. So Councilmember Lesser wants to make a comment?
I do. This item is consideration recommendations for the prioritization of future underground utility assessment districts and discussion of the results from the 2023 Utility Undergrounding Survey. I just wanted to disclose that my home is among those homes that would be considered for a future utility underground district. In consultation with the city attorney, it's been determined that I can participate in this item because it's not a specific action related to my home, but it's more of a general discussion. And as a result, I will participate in this item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, of course. And we have Public Works Director Lee.
Yes, good evening again. Tonight, Senior Civil Engineer Jeff Fialka will be giving the presentation. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I too will try to expedite this to, to keep this brief. My name is Jeff Fialka, Senior Civil Engineer. And as Director Lee indicated, I'll be presenting the results to the Utility Undergrounding Survey that was performed in the fall of last year. To give a little bit of background and context for why we performed the undergrounding survey, the city has an undergrounding program that before the year 2010 completed six undergrounding districts. And then between 2010 and 2017, the undergrounding program was put into an unofficial moratorium due to the economic decline. After 2017, the program was revived and the city started to facilitate the formation of new districts again. Since then, we have moved forward districts four, 12 and 14. And we have districts eight and 13 currently in design. And as I mentioned, the, the program was revived in 2017. Since that time, the city has received numerous requests of property owners who have overhead utilities in their neighborhood, requests to be put in line or on a list for utility undergrounding or for consideration for utility undergrounding. We didn't really have a formal way to prioritize who would go first, other than just, you know, who was first on that list or who submitted their request first. But that wouldn't necessarily be feasible or make sense if people were requesting in areas that, that potentially don't have any viability to form an undergrounding district, you know, for maybe lack of support predominantly or potentially the configuration of the utilities. So in 2022, when we had about 15 potential districts on the list, staff came before council and requested to perform an area-wide survey to assess the level of interest to help us prioritize that list. So the survey that was created and sent out to property owners was very similar to a survey that was sent out to assess interest in undergrounding back in 2006. The survey was one-page front and back. It asked only one question. The, the question was relatively straightforward. It said, it asked, assuming the estimated cost range is provided below, would you be interested in having your property included in an underground assessment, undergrad utility assessment district? Property owners were given the option to complete the survey online or to fill out a paper survey and then submit it in person, send it in the mail or scan it and send it in through email. The survey was sent out to approximately 4,200 properties in the areas identified in this map in blue. I realize it's a little bit difficult to see when we show a whole map of the city, but it's, you know, all of these properties in the survey area are west of Sepulveda and predominantly west of Pacific Avenue. And it includes the areas that are in these locations, west of those streets, but that are obviously not in a previous undergrounding district or in a district that's currently in design or under construction. So of the surveys sent out, we received responses to 1,734 of them. That represents about 41% response rate. And as you can see in the pie chart here, we had about approximately 53% of property owners reporting that they were not in favor of undergrounding and approximately 47% in favor of undergrounding. So as we received all of the survey responses, we mapped them on a per parcel basis so that we could assess the spatial distribution of where there was support and opposition to undergrounding. We then divided up the entire survey area on physical boundaries such as the green belt, major roadways, utility lines, and there are actually utility configurations so where we could feasibly divide up districts. We further subdivided it according to where we saw, you know, concentrations of support or opposition to undergrounding. So trying to bring, you know, a given outlined area with a somewhat similar level of support for undergrounding. So on this map, I realize that you can't read all the numbers, but what we're reporting for each of these sub-areas or potential districts is the number of parcels, the number of responses and the percentage of responses in favor of undergrounding. This is showing that same map so that the sub-regions or potential districts are divided up in the same way. But here we've indicated with red, yellow and green relative level of support. So the districts that are in, potential districts in green have, you know, over 60% support for undergrounding. for undergrounding according to the survey. The yellow is 50 to 59%, and red is less than 50%. So as a point of reference, to start the petition, or to get an approved petition that'll move forward through the district formation process, it requires 66% of property owners in support of undergrounding. So the green districts are obviously the ones that are closest to potentially being able to achieve that. One item that I'd like to point out here is that I'm happy to report that the feedback we received in public comment at the beginning of the meeting is consistent with the findings of our survey. Ms. Everson had mentioned that near Robinson, or south of Robinson Elementary, her neighbors were opposed to undergrounding. That's actually the one sub-area with not a single person responding in favor of undergrounding.
Right.
We had the gentleman at Ardmore and Pacific who indicated he was opposed to utility undergrounding. That area is red as well with about 48%. And then we had a property owner near 26th and Vista, and she's kind of on the cusp of a green and yellow area. So, you know, we're generally seeing that there are some areas that are more interested in undergrounding and areas that are less. This map is showing those, it's a little bit harder to see on the screen, I apologize, but the green areas are the same green areas from the previous map. So we have seven of these potential districts that have over 60% support. And what we're also trying to show here is there's one area outside the original survey area. It's on the west side of Sepulveda, just north of Miracosta. This is the 1,300 block of Voorhees that Mr. Allen had spoke of at the beginning of the meeting. It's somewhat of a unique situation in that this line of properties on the south side of that block is, these properties are essentially bisected by an overhead utility line. So there's quite a bit of support among those property owners. Actually, 15 of 16 of them have indicated they're interested in undergrounding. So staff recommendations are to receive and file the results of the 2023 survey, to direct staff to focus new district formation efforts in areas exhibiting the greatest amount of property owner support. This is for the most efficient use of city resources, our design funds, staff time, et cetera. And third recommendation is to allow subsets of potential districts to move forward if surrounding blocks are not supportive of undergrounding. The city does not have an official minimum size requirement for the district. Edison does, which is only one block or a minimum 600 linear feet for undergrounding. But what we have seen in the city is that nine districts that have previously been approved have been on the order of 100 to 200 parcels. So we're suggesting that the city should maybe think outside of the realm of these larger, you know, dozens or 100 to 200 parcel districts and consider these smaller districts because they may be, you know, in the future, some of our only opportunities to continue the undergrounding. The larger areas in the sand section and in the hill section will be undergrounded for the most part after the completion of the projects that are underway, leaving, you know, smaller pockets. So our proposal is that we would entertain smaller districts, but staff would recommend that we, you know, look, when a smaller district is proposed, look around it in each direction to see if there's other blocks that should be and could be included in that district, and if there aren't, you know, move forward with, you know, a district that can be viable at this time. And that concludes the presentation. I'm open for any questions.
Questions, colleagues?
Thank you. Just one question, maybe two, is that, you know, when we go out for this survey, are they provided any kind of sense what the cost could be, and if we entertain these smaller districts, those costs are going to be higher because they're smaller?
So on the survey, we did provide an indication of what the potential cost would be. The survey asked, would you be interested with the potential cost indicated? For the entire survey area, we represented that potential cost would likely be between $30,000 to $60,000 for the assessment itself, plus properties that have existing overhead connections to that property would incur additional costs for what we call the private conversion, which we indicated would be likely on the order of $10,000 to $20,000. We believe that even in a smaller district, based on discussions with the utility companies, that those costs would be relatively in that ballpark. I mean, they could be a little bit higher, you know, but we have had discussions with Edison, who is, you know, the largest driver of the cost for these projects, relative specifically to the Voorhees project. There likely would be some, you know, loss of economies of scale if we're designing smaller districts, but those would most likely be negated by, if we delay a project and don't do it because we can't join 30 blocks together, it's just going to get more expensive in the future. So there should, you know, we're going to potentially lose some money. And remember, the design fees are recouped by the city and passed on to the property owners. So I'm sure property owners looking at the big picture would rather hire design costs to do the project now.
If they're recouped, aren't they only if they then approve it on the second vote?
Yes, that is correct. That is a good point. They're recouped if this district is successful.
When they get the sticker shock, or if there is sticker shock, that threshold might not be able to be met, especially in a smaller district.
Very true. So that's why it's important to provide a reasonable estimate upfront to avoid the sticker shock.
Okay, I have a quick question. If you take a look at the universe of the districts that have approved, was it by an overwhelming margin? Was it close? I mean, can you sort of draw? I'm just seeing where we could take ones that are on the cusp and put them into, maybe with some effort, make them sign up, or not make them sign, but they vote to sign up.
Are you suggesting something like campaigning or lobbying of the property owners?
No, I mean, just, what was the overall, like, percentage? Was it 72%?
District 4, District 4 in the South Hill section with 167 properties, I believe, at the Prop 218 final ballot, it was about 74%. Districts 12 and 14 in El Porto were in the mid-60s. Keep in mind, at that hearing, it's 50% plus one. It is not 66%, but potentially in the future, it could go to that.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Public comments?
Yes, I would love to have undergrounding. If you're looking at smaller districts, typically what you're supposed to be doing is where you can put, you know, the tension lines for the poles. So there are logical places to cut into smaller districts because if you remove all the wires, then they have to put tension lines. So there's logical places to cut the lines to make it work. Majority of all my neighbors want undergrounding. It'll improve safety. You don't have the transformers next to people's decks. It'll improve property values. It'll make life a lot simpler and easier. But I think if we choose logical ways of doing it, where it makes sense to draw a line, it'll work really well. But yeah, we're very, very excited that there's possibilities for this. And then the other suggestion I also had is, when they're putting in the vents and other things, that they pick logical places to put them. For example, there was a property, I think it was 18th and Ocean, where there's two vents in front of the property, a big mechanical box right in front of the walk street patio, and all this stuff is in front of this guy's house. And I've seen in other locations where somebody hasn't built out, the vent right in the middle of the property. It doesn't block the current garage, but when you build down the road. But if you put the vents between property lines, then it's not going to interfere with anyone building or driveways or garages, things like that. But just maybe have the planning department put together, you know, some good rules for where they put in the undergrounding equipment.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Any other public comments from the chambers, online?
We have John Allen.
Yeah, hi there. Thanks once again for taking up a lot of the important initiatives affecting our community tonight, and thanks, my gosh, for staying so late into the evening. We appreciate it. So I am in the 1,300 block of Voorhees. I heard Councilmember Steve Napolitano's comment. Thank you for that comment. I will let you know, as we've talked to our neighbors here, the 12 homes and 16 parcels, 15 of which are in support, we took into account scale, so notwithstanding the survey, the official survey, we guided our neighbors towards the potential outcome for about $20,000 more per parcel than what's included in the city's official survey. So please have that in your minds. There will not be sticker shock unless something is dramatically different. And then I'd also ask the council members to compare the support. 15 out of 16 parcels at 94%. Some of the individual numbers, as I look at some of the attachments that were presented by Jeff Fialka, who again has just been terrific in educating us in the process, as I look at some of the attachments, it occurs to me that 11 out of 12 homes is higher than the absolute number of homes in some of the west of Sepulveda areas, proposed districts. So we feel like dances with wolves out here, and we're really looking for your support. Thank you so much, you guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Anymore?
Gregory Young.
Hi, I live at 1,350 Voorhees, just down the street from where John is, and I guess I have two questions. One, when we met with Jeff, I don't remember when they were talking about vents, and it's not, we were talking about boxes, but not vents. And then my other real question had to do with, on this postcard we got in the mail, it says, you're going to talk about the survey and then possibly changing, making changes to the existing program. Could somebody elaborate what that is, Jeff, or somebody? What are these changes you're talking about making from what you shared with us a month or two ago?
Okay, I think.
We do have one more public comment.
Yeah, okay. So he'll have to get back to you on that. So next.
JT.
Hi, my name is Joe Touch, I'm a 22-year resident of Manhattan Beach. I have to admit that I am astounded at the level of gerrymandering going on here, taking a survey and then creating boundaries post facto. I don't appreciate the fact that every few years, this issue keeps coming up for my neighborhood in Manhattan Beach, and you keep changing the rules until you get the answer that you want. I hear what the city wants. I don't hear what the residents want all the time here. I know that there are pockets of people who do want it, but there's other pockets who don't. And having this question keep being asked, and the percent needed to pass it keeps changing. It was originally 2/3, then it was dropped to 50 plus one. Then there were original boundaries that were set, and the boundaries changed and were citizen-led. Now, all of a sudden, the boundaries are determined by the city clerk after the votes are passed. I've never seen that in my life before. I'd be very interested to hear what a lawyer has to say about all that. I don't approve of any of this. I don't appreciate the fact that one of the council members who has a conflict of interest on this thinks that it's appropriate, or that the city lawyer thinks it's appropriate, that they allow themselves time at the microphone, that I do not get. I only get two minutes. I think they should only get two minutes if that's the case. So I'm just really astounded at this whole process and not happy with it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anymore?
There's no additional requests.
Public comments are closed, colleagues.
I'm in motion, Your Honor.
Yeah, we have a motion to accept by Councilmember Richard Montgomery.
Yeah, I have a comment along with that. Those of us that have institutional knowledge, I mean, everybody up here has institutional knowledge, but I filed against Napolitano, 2005 to 13, proponent of undergrounding, and the caller was correct. '05 to '13, we had a 50% plus one ratio to approve districts. And that went fine, and then the recession hit, and the council behind it decided to lock it down to 2017, and we came in 2017 and uncuffed our revised, I should say, lifted the moratorium, and we had 40 different districts start up, or 14 districts start up right behind us. So in order to make sure that we understood it, let's start the premise here. The city doesn't start a district. The residents do. The residents vote yes or no. Some districts fail. They don't get there because the owners don't want it. Some move forward. Edison decides the districts and sets out minimums, not the city. So make sure you get the information that we have an FAQ on the website talks about that, how the district formed, what we're doing now. If Edison sets the rule, I forgot, Jeff, what you said, 600 feet of a street is the minimum, setting the district up, then Voorhees meets that requirement. And instead of piecing them all every single time, we can do administrative, what Jeff's talking about. If districts have strong support like Voorhees does, they shouldn't need to come here every single time to do with moving it forward. If they have that much support, I never see one 94%. The 70s that we saw in District 4 up in the Hill section, and the ones we saw in District 14 and 14A along El Porto, those are the ones that have been the strongest ones. And their construction are almost done, some of them, which is great. So remember the key things here. Residents vote, they move the process forward, they vote yes or no, they pay for it, not the city. That's my motion, Your Honor, to do follow two things. Receive and file the results of 2023 UAD survey, direct staff to focus new district formation efforts in areas exhibiting the greatest amount of property owner support, and allow subsets of potential districts to move forward if the surrounding blocks are not supportive of undergrounding. That's my motion, Your Honor.
Seconded by Mayor Protam Hoerth.
Yep, the one and only. Motion passes 5-0.
Sorry. Moving on, AB 1234 reports.
I have a couple, Your Honor. I attended the National League of Cities Congressional Conference in DC. That's where you get to talk to your congress members. Thank Congressmember Lou for giving the city $200,000 to help us with our future projects. Also, our US senators, you can talk to our senators, what's going on, they all have issues affecting us. Of course, I brought up, not undergrounding, I brought up airport noise, FAA over flights by Hawthorne Airport, which is more and more flights every day. Once Santa Monica Airport closes down, we're going to get more of that, and SoFi Stadium and everything else we're doing. So they got an earful from us and all this stuff, but people got to hear all that. And then I got to run home and then got to go to Civic Planner Association up in Northern California, where we got to hear about, A, electrification results in the state of California. We're not going to meet our 20, 30 goals, folks, of having electrification for all electric cars. The demand is not there. Cal ISO wants to buy electrical rights out of state so we can provide, contribute to our own people, our own resident businesses going forward. But we all saw what's going on in the future here, but just to shock anybody, we're not going to meet our goal, 2030 being self-efficient, electrical going forward. But now I get to go home, rest for a few days.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Any others? Anybody? No? Future agenda items? So I have one. So the Sandpipers have provided a donation in their name by benefactors in the amount of $50,000 to the Community Scout House, and what?
Wow.
Okay. And so they are requesting some scheduling reservation privileges of no more than six sessions a year for Sandpiper events during non-scout activities.
I'll second it. You're good.
Okay. Great, thank you. And city manager report.
I was just saying that that's only a two-step process because it comes back, no staff time's needed. So at the next meeting or whenever, you can vote on it.
Okay, great, thank you.
No report tonight, thank you.
Okay. City attorney report.
No report tonight.
Okay, any informational items? And we are adjourning. We are adjourning, the meeting is adjourned to a closed session on Tuesday, April 2, 2024, at 5:00 PM in City Council Chambers. Thank you.